Yes. We are reconvening our hearings on City Council Bill 16663, ordinance of estimates for the city of Baltimore. Apologies for the delay. We are beginning with, today we will hear from the Law Department, Office of Inspector General, State's Attorney's Office, and the Family League. Mr. Nielsen, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Please let us know who you have brought with you. You may go through your presentation, and then we will begin with questions.
So, on the questions, because I know Councilman Henry has to leave early, I would invite him, if he has any questions even before he hears our presentation, please just raise your hand and ask, and I will recognize you if I may.
Well, he has to direct those through the chair.
Right. So, I have brought with me a staff of thousands. My deputy city solicitor, David Ralph, is over here to my right. David is going to address one particular thing this morning, which is one of our enhancement proposals having to do with data capturing, utilization, and it's a subject which is critically important, but David knows a lot more about it than I do. Otherwise, I'm going to be doing the talking. Also with me here today is Gwen Tromley, who's behind me on the left in the second or first row, and Hillary Rulie, a face familiar to all of you. So, I'm going to be brief. I'm not going to use the PowerPoint up there. You all have copies of it. I'm going to cover some of the information in there, and we are here largely to answer your questions, either provoked by what we say or the information in the written materials. The Law Department has 66 lawyers, by my count. That number varies one way or another depending on who all you count. We have a total of just over 100 employees, counting our investigative staff, our other professional staff, and our administrative staff. So, our budget is more than 90 percent in the Personnel Department. So, we don't have a lot of capital things or other stuff. It's very heavy personnel. Our lawyers, who, if I may brag for just a minute, enjoy really outstanding reputation in the city government generally and in the courts, to an extent unparalleled in the recent, by recent, I mean last 30-year history of the Law Department. They are a terrific group. They have considerable credibility when they go into court. They are underpaid, although that's getting a little bit better, and one of the things that I'm proudest of is as underpaid as they are, the Law Department has been a 100 percent participant in the Combined Charities Campaign for at least the last three years and maybe as many as the last five years, and I don't, there's no other city agency that comes close to that. And that not only speaks to the, it speaks to the quality of the people who work for us, who we've been able to bring to the Law Department, but it also speaks to a sense of community and collaborative attitude that we work hard to promote in the Law Department. The budget for the Law Department, proposed budget for the coming year allows us to maintain and continue our current level of service without any significant or noticeable service reductions. There are two enhancements that I'm going to talk about. I'm going to talk about one of them, and David's going to talk about the others. I want to just identify for you the various groups within the Law Department, and you'll see them laid out in the materials, both, in both parts of the material. The largest group in the Law Department is the controversies group. Unfortunately, because we're a big government and we have people who often have issues with us and our people, we get sued a lot, and so that, dealing with all those claims, suits, and other items is the responsibility of the controversies group. That includes the litigation group headed by Matthew Naden. It includes labor and employment. It includes collections. It includes all of the parts of the Law Department that deal with controversies as opposed to transactions. Transactions is our second biggest group, and they're the ones who provide advice and counsel to the council, provide the preparation and review of all contracts that the city enters into, and a host of other transactions that sometimes themselves morph into controversies eventually. The administration group is a small group, a small but important group because it includes the solicitor and certain other administrative functions. MWBoo is a part of the Law Department, as most of you know. MWBoo's materials, budgetary materials are in your documents. It is headed now by a gentleman named Courtney Billups, who's been with us for about a year. Terrific fellow, came to us from the state, highly recommended, and is doing a superb job, and some of his unit's ambitions for the coming year are mentioned in those materials. Last and by no means least is the Baltimore Police Department Legal Affairs Group. As you might imagine, they've had a very challenging year. They're a terrific group of lawyers. It's a high-stress job. They're headed currently by Glenn Marrow. They are about a dozen people altogether, and they have enjoyed, notwithstanding the stress that they've worked under, a very low turnover rate, which has not always been the case. So, we're very pleased with the functionality of that unit. And then there's the Inspector General, who is presenting separately to you today, and his budget is done separately, but he is, under the executive order, creating that office administratively a part of the Law Department. We try very hard not to mess with him. We let him do his thing. We are generally supportive when he has budget requests, which get processed through the budget people, but he will talk to you separately about his work. The Law Department is, informally in a way, I mean, this is not something that you see in our org chart, I don't think, but it's overseen by an executive committee, which I created about two years ago. That consists of myself, of David Ralph, of Gwen Tromley, who's with us here today, Suzanne Sangree, who's a senior lawyer in the Law Department, and Matthew Naden, the head of litigation. And we meet every two weeks and basically deal with all of the significant issues pending before the, before the Law Department. So, I want to talk to you about the two enhancement proposals that are part of our recommended budget this year. I'm going to talk to you about the police claims investigative part of it, and then I'm going to turn you over to David, who will talk about the data part and cover anything else.
Wait one second, for the sound of facts to pass.
Evidently, they're on their way here.
Okay.
They want to come here, they want to come here themselves.
They've already been here. Those are police cars, I assume, although one can't always be sure. So, the investigative, the police investigative function, for years, there are different ways that people who have a beef with the Police Department get that beef handled. They go to the civilian review board, they can file a complaint with the Police Department, or eventually they can sue the officers with whom they have an issue, and often the commissioner and everybody else in between. In order to pursue that latter remedy of ultimately bringing a lawsuit, they are required initially to file a claim letter saying, you know, something bad happened to me, here's what it is, generally, and that's a necessary prerequisite for their being able to eventually sue the department. Historically, those claim letters are simply referred over to the Police Department, and they sit there, and nothing happens to them. And because, there are lots of other ways that people can bring, get our attention, but sending in one of those claim letters in the past has not been a way to effectively get our attention, unless the author of the claim letter picks up the phone and calls David or me or the head of legal affairs and says, "I sent you all a letter. I really would like to talk about this now." So, it seemed to us that that was a big mistake, and we don't, we don't have, in the Law Department, a position or a human being, nor did the Police Department have such a person to deal with those letters. And so, we proposed, and the budget incorporates, that there be a position, it'd be filled by an investigator. He would have the resources otherwise of the Law Department and the Police Department. That individual, he or she, would get those claims letters, take a look at them, decide which ones could benefit from an early evaluation, gather information, in the hopes that those matters can be resolved without the necessity of filing a lawsuit. That has two very, very beneficial effects. One of them is to reduce the cost to us of dealing with that claim and defending against it, because we don't then have to turn the claim over to outside counsel. We don't have to litigate. We don't have to do formal discovery. Not every claim is going to get resolved this way, but at least we have an opportunity to look at a claim and say, "Look, the facts here are pretty straightforward. You know, we need to talk to a couple of people. We need to gather some information, but let's engage with this claimant," typically these letters are written by lawyers, or the claimant's lawyer, "and see if we can't resolve this now," rather than both sides spending a whole lot of money suing and defending on down the road. So, that's one benefit that early attention has. The other benefit is that it brings to our attention and to the Police Department's attention the behavior that prompted the letter or the claim. So, if something's going on out there on the street by a particular police officer or if there's a series of activities that, you know, is cropping up on several occasions, it is much better, obviously, to find out about that and focus on that early on, a matter of months after the incident, rather than at the end of the filing of a lawsuit, the litigating of a lawsuit, so two years later, we, you know, we see a settlement proposal or a judgment occasionally that identifies some conduct that, had we, had we focused on it a year and a half earlier, we would all be better off. The department would be better off. And so, it's a, it's an additional kind of early warning effort. The Police Department itself and its own disciplinary activities are doing early warning things, so this is our contribution to the early warning, you know, concept of identifying and dealing with complaints about, against police officers. So, at this point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna return for questions that any of you may have, but I'm going to ask David to speak to the data enhancement proposal.
Very good. Thank you. I want to begin with asking if you would provide to this committee the number of contracted attorneys currently working in the Law Department, for what purposes they are contracted, and the value of those contracts?
If I can just clarify your question, are, you're talking about, so we have some lawyers who work for us on contract, day in, day out.
Yes.
Is that what you're looking for?
We want all of them. Any attorneys that are under contract, working for the Law Department, what purpose are they working for and the value and time of those contracts?
So, including the day-to-day ones and the ones who are engaged?
Including the day-to-day ones and including the ones that are for specific transactional purposes.
Okay, and when do you want that information by?
We'd like it before we move forward on the budget.
Which is going to be when?
That's a very good question. We don't know just yet.
No, but when would, what would you?
Well, we would sooner than later.
Okay. I have a list of-
Sooner than later. The sooner we get it, the sooner we're in a position to move forward on the budget.
Got it.
But you have been looking forward sometime before. I assume you wanted to know the situation.
Yes. My next, my next question deals with Service 869 Minority and Women's Business Opportunity-
David was going to talk to you about the data enhancement.
Okay, well, while you're here, I want you to have benefit of these questions.
I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, okay, very good. Okay, well, David, go ahead and talk about data enhancement.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and other members of City Council. One of our budget enhancements is what we call information governance enhancement. Essentially, what that is, is a common sense way of addressing an issue that has been wasting the city money for years. As George said, we handle a number of cases, and we are mandated by charter to handle those cases. So, we can't decline to handle a case. Suits brought against the city must be handled. We have hundreds of those cases. Some of those cases involve terabytes of data. And just to put in context, one case, one case alone, had about two terabytes of data. And I'm a visual person, and try to give you a visual picture of what that looks like. That's about 250 tractor trailers' worth of documents. And a lawyer at the Law Department has to look through all of that data to determine what's relevant.
Pull the mic up just a little bit, David.
Sure. A lawyer in the Law Department has to look at that data to determine what is relevant and what is appropriate for disclosure to the other side. That takes time, a lot of time. So, what, and it costs a lot of money. So, we have to handle, we have to, because there may be privileged documents, because you're talking about, as I said, 250 truckloads of documents, we have to, and the court requires that that be processed in a certain way and certified. Moit cannot do it. One person cannot do it. We have to hire an outside source to sift through that with systems that they have, and that costs a lot of money. One case alone, the one case that I talked about with two terabytes of data, cost us $750,000 to, to capture, to analyze, and to reduce for production data in that case. That is an inefficient way of doing it. When we can have, if we have the capability to have that kind of system internally, we can save the city money. So, it's not a matter of us paying or not paying. We're going to pay one way or the other. It's how much are we going to pay? Does it make sense to have outside vendors do this for much, much more than it costs the city to do it, or does it make sense to have the cities have that capability to do it internally? And again, like I said, we can't turn down these matters. We're mandated by charters to do it, and we're mandated by the courts to have to handle these cases in this way. Also, there are sanctions involved. If documents aren't turned over appropriately and timely, the court can sanction us. In the last several years, we've had hundreds of thousands, hundreds of, excuse me, hundreds of millions of dollars in liability that the city is at risk for at any given time. In addition to that, you know, we have an MPIA, where the public can request documents. There are times when the City Council has requested information, and we have to provide that information wherever it is throughout the city. These systems that we're asking for in the enhancement would help to gather that data and make it producible in a more efficient way than we've done in the past. So, that's essentially our proposal, and again, I know that there are questions, if there are any questions for me or for George, we'll be happy to address them.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, back to my first question. Let me do this before we go on further. I'm sure you know everyone, but just for purposes of all in the room, I'm Helen Holton from the 8th District Chair of the Budget Appropriations Committee, joined by my vice chair, Councilman Jim Kraft from the 1st District, Councilman, a member of the committee, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, Councilman Eric Costello, 11th District, member of the committee, Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, member of the committee, Ms. Rebecca Tab, counsel to the City Council, in the President's Office, Ms. Kara Kunst, Legislative Director from the President's Office, Ms. Marguerite, to my right, your left, Ms. Marguerite Murray, staff to the committee, Councilman Nick Mosby from the 7th District, Councilman Rochelle Ricky Specter from the 5th District, Councilman Edward Reisinger, Vice President of the Council, member of the committee, Mr. Larry Green, Director of Council Services, and Mr. Paul Plymouth from the President's Office.
So, let me just add, lest you think that David's example of the very expensive case that all that data, two days ago, the Board of Estimates approved a settlement in a Police Department-related case, and one of the things that impacted that settlement was the fact that for us to retrieve the emails in this federal case, the emails alone that covered the period of time that the, that the facts were ongoing was $175,000. So, when you're looking at a settlement of 40-some-odd thousand dollars, as we were in that case, and you know you've got an obligatory $175,000 email retrieval expense, it has effect on settlements. And so, having the kind of data retrieval that David's talking about would mitigate against those problems.
Absolutely.
Happy to answer any questions.
And I think that we all want a higher level of efficiency in government without just the expensive cost. I want to go back to the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office. I see a slight increase in their budget, and looking at the number of applications, new and renewing businesses, particularly in light of Harbor Point and the Back River Waste Treatment Plan.
They're projecting handling more, receiving and handling more applications. I think their turnaround time has improved, and they hope to further improve it.
Yes, but I do know, should the Port Covington TIF go through, we're looking at an even larger number that we may be looking at, because they've got stuff all over the place. And what, is there a plan to, I mean, we've got the Popleton TIF that was approved. What is the plan in light of there already being tenured staff that may, could possibly be looking at retirement or what have you? Because this is a critical component, and the potential of having a small business enterprise program coming on tap to handle the increase of work.
Well, I think, if I remember the notes to that, to their budget, they, they have already now, it may be that this was done several months ago before all of the details came out about Port Covington, but I think that that budget ask and their capacity and their expectation does reflect an awareness that Port Covington is coming along. Popleton, I don't know.
Popleton was approved.
Well, yes, I know that, but it's at a, it's at a more, it's still at a relatively preliminary stage in terms of aggressive activity. So, the short answer is, if those projects are moving forward even more aggressively and more quickly than we contemplated, and we have to add staff, we'll add staff, and we'll shuffle things around in the Law Department budget, and/or we'll be back next year.
Very good. The other question I have, and I know we're going into a new administration where MBU won't go away, but in terms of the Mayor's Office of Minority Business Development, the coordination between those two departments, well, that office and then what's in the Law Department, how is that handled in terms of resources? I know there's the Mayor's supplier diversity, something, 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 and other things. There are times that they need to work together, and is that incorporated in within the duties that are budgeted for in your office and that office?
They absolutely do need to work together. I will be the first to tell you that over my nine years in this job, they haven't always played well in the sandbox together. That was a function I would respectfully suggest of some personality challenges, going back maybe six or seven years. I think lately, both under Tom Corry's more recent stint as the head of the MBU office and now under Courtney Billups, I think that the relationship between those two entities has been very good, collaborative. They're not stepping on each other's toes, or getting in each other's way. You know, often how well two small agencies work together is a real function of the people who happen to head them, and I think right now we're in a good place.
Very good. Councilwoman Inspector?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if you can help us on this, but I've had the same problem with my colleague, Brandon Scott, because his family lives in the area.
Speak up a little bit, Councilwoman.
There's a chronic sewage backup problem in the part of my district, and what's so frustrating is that when they file claims against the city because DPW is at fault for not maintaining it, whatever, it's inconsistent. One household gets reimbursed, the other one doesn't. How do you figure out if it's the same block and the same damage?
So, every, every situation is a little different, and it's bound to be the case that some homeowners or citizens will have a claim paid and others will not. The basic, the base, the difference, the difference between or among the sewage backup claims is almost always whether the city knew before the incident occurred that there was a problem there. The city, if something happens in a sewer line, whether it's a big one or a little one, and the city had no reason to believe that there was a problem that it needed to fix at that location, and the problem happens and it causes a backup in somebody's basement, the city is not legally responsible for that damage. And, and citizens understandably are not happy when they're told that, and if we were to pay every single claim whenever there is a backup in somebody's sewer, we would be accused, or in somebody's basement, we would be accused of spending money, taxpayer, general taxpayer money, that we don't have to spend, and we shouldn't be spending.
But things are the same incidents.
So, our job, our job, our job is to make sure that where we are legally responsible and the investigation indicates that, the claim gets paid, but when we're not legally responsible because we had no way of knowing that a problem was going to develop at that place, we don't pay. And if a citizen's unhappy, they can and sometimes do sue us.
Except it's the same incident. It's just that the same, some people get reimbursed and some don't. It's the same incident.
Well, if there, if there is a situation-
Brandon has similar situations because his family lives in-
Councilwoman Inspector, if there's a situation, particular situation like that where 10 people who you think were in precisely the identical circumstance got treated differently, you should communicate that to me, and we'll look into it. But I, you know, we try very hard to treat people with the same circumstance, the same, but often they're not, the circumstances aren't the same.
Councilman Scott, I know that you-
There are also councilwomen, there are, of course, our circumstances sometimes where claim comes in very late, so like years down the road. Somebody makes a prompt and timely claim, we're access the data, the information, but then somebody else, you know, thinks, "I'm not going to push this." We hear from them years later. So, there are all kinds of reasons why what looked like similar circumstances might get different outcomes. But again, if you're aware of a situation where you think two citizens got treated differently from one another and they should have been treated the same, you should communicate that to me. Send me an email.
Okay.
Okay.
Fair enough. Councilman Scott?
I'm gonna, Councilman Costello, okay. Councilman Scott, you wanted to follow up on this one, so why don't you go ahead and go get Councilman Costello when he returns?
Sir, I guess this, this, I think my colleague did a fair job of explaining it, but this issue has been going on since I was a staff member in a council president's office, so this is where the city picks and chooses when they want to give out. So, just to your first comment, if we settle basically every police claim, we should be settling these claims as well, because we're paying out millions of dollars. But in this particular case, both in Councilwoman Inspector and Councilwoman Middleton's district, because the neighborhoods are on the border, DPW came to a community meeting with both council members and myself and said, "We were supposed to do A, B, C, X, Y, and Z. We did not do it. We're going to do it before the next, the next time. We're going to make sure that we do this so that we don't have that problem." And then, six years later, we have a big rainstorm, and they hadn't done it. So, that means everybody-
Then it's on, then it should be our nickel. Then, then that's bad on us, and that claim should get paid.
Yeah, the problem is, is that's not what happened. In actuality, if you look at just the article from a few weeks ago in the Baltimore Sun, some people were given it, some people weren't, and also, at the meeting, a timeframe was given to the constituents at the community meeting, and then a lot of them, what they're saying is that when they submitted their claim, they were saying, "No, it was a different timeframe," when all of us heard what was said. So, I think we should take a deeper look at that, because it's not just this incident. It's across the city where, I hate to pick on them, DPW often forgets or neglects to do something, and it impacts a whole slew of people who are always denied a claim because it's an act of God. It's not an act of God, it's an act of someone not doing their job.
Well, where DPW, just generally speaking, and I'm not referring, obviously, to a specific situation, which I don't know the particulars of, where DPW sees a problem in, you know, 2012, and says to the community, "We see this problem. This should be fixed. We will fix it," and they don't, and lo and behold, in 2016, the same problem recurs, and DPW hasn't done anything, okay? If that information is brought to the Law Department or becomes known to us, we should be approving those, the settlements of those claims. So, if you, if you all think, one, two, three, or more of you think that there are situations around- So if you, if you all think, one, two, three, or more of you think that there are situations around the city where people have been treated differently and they shouldn't have been, and you want us to dig into it, you have to be our, you have to get us started by telling us more about where those situations are so that we can, you know, grab your three examples and run with them and look more broadly. That's all I would ask of you all.
This wouldn't be three examples, just from that one issue alone, you're talking about two blocks of two complete streets because it impacts every household on that block. But thank you, sir.
And I know that there are some parts of the city where there are problems that impact blocks, you know, one or two blocks, not just an individual homeowner. Sometimes those problems can be fixed. Sometimes it takes a lot of resources and some time to fix them. So again, I'd have to look at a specific situation.
Councilman Kraft?
George, I, I just want to follow up on that conversation there because what is not an uncommon occurrence is for an agency, and for purposes that the conversation will continue with DPW, to be made of, to be made aware of a situation. And it may even be just a particular situation affecting a particular residence. Maybe a water hookup or it may be something flowing behind an alley or whatever. And so DPW is made aware of it. They go out and they may put up a cone, put a cone because there's a hole in the sidewalk or water. And that cone is put there and that cone sits there for four months. And during that four months.
Of course, the problem is supposed to be fixed sooner than four months.
Well, they're supposed, there's, yeah, well, they're aware of it. And, and you know, and during that four months, you know, the person, it rains, person's basement gets flooded, it rains, the person's basement get flooded, we call DPW and say, you know, you guys know about this. You told them that you're gonna fix it. You've told us we're gonna fix it. And you're not fixing it. And they continue to get flooded. So, you know, we put in that sort of a claim. I mean, city's on notice on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And you just need to be, you need to like be made aware, what you're saying is you need to be made aware of that. So we need, or at least we need to tell the citizens to do a better job of documenting when these initial contacts are made.
That's where it starts. It starts with the individual citizen who, who knows that the cone went up four months ago, knows that DPW was called or whoever. And when, and when they file a claim, they should say, DPW knew about this on X date or whatever, so that we have a red flag because we go and investigate as, as best we can by looking at the DPW records, by talking to DPW people. But we're gonna do a much better job of that if the citizen starts the process by saying, four months ago, they knew about it. There's been a red cone up ever since.
So just to, to follow up on that, so suppose that DPW says, we're gonna fix it. They get the flooding, they complain, DPW says, we're gonna fix it. And now it's nine, 10 months later and DPW finally fixes it, but they then look and they've got, you know, $20,000 worth of damage that they've made three claims with their insurance company and all. And then they, at that point, decide to make a claim, you know, for the damage, but the incident started 10 months ago, right? Because that's when they first gave notice.
Well, claim's gotta be timely made, so there are limits. You can't make claims, you know, years in the future. So.
So, but when does the, the claim trigger? Is it when they first gave the city notice that they knew it? I mean, is that when you're gonna say, well, if you didn't file it within?
Well, the damage occurs, the damage occurs, let's say, on June 1st, 2016, okay? So the citizen has a period of time from that date when the damage occurs to file a claim against the city. Filing, filing it three and a half years later isn't gonna, isn't gonna get them a payment.
But it, but if they file it 10 months later because of the fact that DPW keeps saying, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it.
Well, but there's a big difference between fixing it and paying me for the damage I've already suffered. So the mere fact that DPW may say, I'm gonna fix it, doesn't relieve the citizen of the obligation to come forward timely and say, I was hurt last week. Come to the law department. You file a claim with the law department.
Okay, so what they.
That's who you come to if you want to get paid for damage.
Okay, but what I'm, okay, so.
So there's separate questions.
Then what we've thought is, then we, we're almost put in a position of where, you know, DPW says, let me put a bigger picture. So the person gets flooded, DPW comes out and says, we know this is us. They put the cone down, okay? So at that point, what we're saying is they gotta make their claim right then.
Let me make, let me make a suggestion for going forward. And with all due respect to those of you who are here today but won't be here next spring. So those of you who are here today, who have examples of the kinds of things you're talking about, get them in our hands and we will sit down with the new counsel. And because you all do constituent services for all these people and these citizens who may not be sure who to go to in the city and where to process their claims, et cetera, often come to you for help. And so you can be effective messengers for us. So I would suggest that we, the law department, sit down with the counsel interested in constituent services as it is and give you a primer and just say, look, here's the process. I think most of you know this, but the, but the rookies, the newcomers may not. So some of you may say, I don't need that primer. But, you know, to, to sit down and work with you and say, here's, here's what citizens should be doing. And, and I would say one thing, just because there've been a couple of examples of this. Well, council, council people.
Okay.
Council people are asking for trouble if they undertake to assume responsibility for the citizen to file and process their complaint or their claim. One thing to advise them, but, but I would advise you not to say to Citizen Jones, I'll take care of this for you. I'll file your paperwork. I'll get the law department. Because once you do that, you know, you're picking up their ball and that can create problems for you all, I would say so.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. What I, what I was, where I was going was saying to the, the, the person, you err on the side of caution.
Yeah, when in doubt, file.
Yeah, make, you know, make your claim.
Yeah.
And, and just say, and if you guys say, well, wait a minute, you don't even know what your damages are yet. And you say, look, all I want to do is make sure I'm in here so that you can't come back later and tell me I didn't file it timely.
If you, if you file a claim and you say, my damages are something more than a thousand dollars, our investigator will get back to you and say, we've got your claim, timely filed. When you, when you know more about your damages, you need to supplement your filing. And you need to remember, as I said earlier, that a claim for damages is different from dealing with DPW's promise to fix the problem in the future.
No problem. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Reisinger? Okay, we'll go to Councilman Mosby.
Hey, George, real quick. I know the strategy as it relates to the settlements that we've been talking about is to reduce them over time. What type of mechanisms, what type of strategies, what type of initiatives are in place to, one, track year over year, the amount of settlements as it relates to the number of claims, to try to understand and predict the trajectory in the future?
You talking about generally or police department or?
Generally, I mean, everything. For, I mean, DPW being more proactive as it relates to some of the issues. So at the end of the day, it's all money that's really wasted when we have to do settlements. So, you know, do we track that or is it, we just kind of play?
Well, we do track it and some of that information is in the controversy section of our budget material. But I, I've been asked the question, for example, and I don't have a mathematical tracking with numbers for you. So whether, what has happened to claims filed and settlement payouts in police department cases since the settlement with the family of Freddie Gray? In other words, some, some people say, well, anecdotally, because the city reached what, what many have described as a generous settlement with that family, has that caused claims to skyrocket? And my answer to, on that particular situation, because we've looked at it, is there are anecdotal situations where lawyers, lawyers on the other side say, I want to get my million dollar payment or, you know, try to use that in negotiations. It's really not been effective and settlements have not gone up, the per case settlements have not gone up, filings haven't gone up. We post all of our, you know, virtually, all of our big, larger settlements are posted online and anybody can go and look, look at that. So we, we are carefully monitor that. Now, we have the ability to pull data out, looking at other categories of settlements and payments, whether they are auto torts or, or sewage backups. We haven't done that. But, you know, we have the ability to extract data and look at that. And so we're focused more on just making sure our process is good, that we have good lawyers handling it, that we have good lawyers, we have good investigators in our investigative unit. But I can't give you data on the rest of it.
I would actually love to see if there's a way that we could look at the data year over year. But I'm talking about from a more cerebral perspective. And I realize from a law department, you know, your job is to ensure that we have a fair process in place and that the settlements come out according to that process. And I get that. But what I'm trying to do is, or say, that I think is really important, and I know it's something that you can't do in a vacuum, that the law department shouldn't do in the vacuum. And I'm not even sure if the law department is the quarterback. But there has to be a strategy in place to say, how can we, over time, reduce the number of settlements? Maybe we're moving in the wrong direction, maybe we're moving in the right direction, we just need to move quicker. But there should be a regular evaluation of that. That's what I'm trying to get to.
So we, we do a self-evaluation. We have a more robust settlement committee effort than we did.
George, what I'm saying is outside of the law department, more important in the agencies associated with the processes and procedures that they're doing things. So say, for instance, I know everyone likes to talk about the police, but just talk about DPW. Is there things that they can do from a process and procedural perspective of being more proactive to help reduce some of the settlements?
Well, one of the things that we do at DPW, for example, is we now have a legal capacity within DPW and their job is to get information to us when we're invested. So they support DPW's providing us with the information that we need to evaluate their claims. So we have an Office of Legal and Regulatory Affairs and we have folks in that office who are not, they're lawyers, they're not technically part of the law department. And their mission is to get us promptly accurate information from DPW because DPW is the generator of a fair number of claims.
All right. You're gonna follow up because two questions, Councilwoman.
Well, this is the same question, but I'm okay. We can move on.
So, and, and our payout, just by the way, and this is covered in the material, so we pay out 1% of the money's claimed. So we get, you know, we get sued every year for a million dollars or a lot more than that. And our payouts are, have been consistently now, they're not, they're not going from 1% down to 0.2%, but they're pretty, pretty low down there and pretty good numbers. But, you know, we're happy to get, you know, happy to take a look at ways that we can not only improve inside the law department, but reach out to the agencies that are the biggest offenders. And we do try that.
Thank you. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Service 861 controversies, the performance measure, the percent of repayment amount versus amount negotiated for collection cases. Let's just take 17, target's 81%. Can you, I don't understand the, the two numbers that you're comparing here to get that ratio of 81%.
I think, now that comes out of the collections group, which is a, a very effective group that handles collection of amounts of money owed by the city. Many of those, many of their activities produce a payment agreement. And so I believe what that, those numbers are indicating is what is the percentage of money that we actually collect at the end of the day compared with the amount of money that was to be paid per the collection agreement? So right, so not everybody pays, shocking as that may seem.
Okay.
So we have a case right now, we have a case right now where the owner of six condominium units entered into an agreement to pay, I think the payment total was $30,000 for his six condominium units, and he stopped paying. He paid an initial amount. So, so that particular collection agreement right now, until he cleans up his act, which he's now starting to pay attention to because his six units have gone into tax sale. So, so there's a 0%. But for the most part, people pay. There are two units, two condo units in the same building. So that's what that number is.
I, I, I got it. So it's.
That's how much we collect against those, the amounts they're obligated to pay under those agreements.
I got it. So it's a collections issue, not the expense of getting, got it. My next question is, and my understanding is that all settlements have to go to the Board of Estimates?
$25,000 and over.
Do we have a balance sheet of settlements for versus against the city?
I, I don't know what you mean by a balance sheet of that. So with some cases.
Let me, let me, let me clarify. We, we, let's say we made a payout, a, a police payout for $100,000. And then let's say a contractor on a DPW contract screwed up and paid us $200,000. The, the, the sum at the end of the balance sheet would be 100,000 in the green for the city if that were the only two settlements.
We don't, we don't, we don't have data, never have, never put together data, pulling together all the settlements on where the city makes claims. And there are cases like that, big and small, where, where we have very large claims and we collect on them and we have a whole lot of small ones in collections. No, we've never, we've never balanced out those numbers to say, how much are we collecting and how much are we paying? They're very different kinds of cases in both of those clusters. And I'm, I'm not sure what, how that would help us, but we could certainly look at that.
Well, all of those cases have one thing in common, and that's taxpayer money. And that we're either bringing in revenue for the city or we're, or we're expending dollars. I mean, and that would be the, for like fiscal year 17 on, on Service 861, the target of 450 lawsuits handled. There's an assumption that each lawsuit could result in a net gain or loss for the city. Is that correct?
Well, so 450 lawsuits brought against the city, obviously.
No, that includes lawsuits that the city brings against other parties as well, right?
So are you, are you still looking at this, um, collections?
Service, no, no, controversies. Service 861, the top performance measure, number of lawsuits handled. Target for 17 is 450?
I, I don't know offhand whether that's collections or whether that's litigation generally. I suspect it's collections.
Who, who came up with the performance measure?
The, the number is, is all cases, but the percentage is what we've paid out. So we've paid, the percentage takes into consideration the percentage of what was demanded against the city and what was actually paid out. So included in that amount will be cases where we paid zero because we've won those cases. So the top number includes all cases handled, either brought or defended. I would like to point out one thing though. As George said, these are different types of cases. Proactive litigation and, and, or which, which is what we call affirmative litigation and defensive litigation. Defensive litigation is mandated by charter. Affirmative litigation is not. And those are the cases where, so we have to, George and I, we have to allocate resources between those things, which is, one is charter mandated and one is not. And so, you know, that, that's part of the, that's part of the job is to, to allocate those resources.
So the police brutality example.
Yes.
That would be charter mandated because someone is suing the city.
That is correct.
But if the contractor for DPW screwed up, that would be affirmative because the city came to the conclusion that.
That's correct.
We need to go after them.
And we do go after those cases.
And we do.
So, so my question is, do we just have a list of how much money's come in for settlements versus? versus how much money's gone out?
And respectfully, if I, if I could ask, for purposes of finance, I know they have what was gained and what was sent out, but for purposes of the law department, that's not a useful piece of information for us. If there is an affirmative, you understand, if there's a, if there's money to be, to be gained and there's a legal basis for it, we go after it. If there isn't, we don't. If there's any kind of litigation, whether, that's against the city, whether it has a basis or not, we have to defend that.
I got you, so.
Also, Councilman, I'm not sure why you would, I mean, you, you can, but I'm not, I'm wondering why you would focus only on settlements, because if you want to look at the efficacy or effectiveness of our litigation efforts, both offensively and defensively, you would look at settlements and judgments and wins.
It doesn't have to do with you. You, you explained why that's not useful information in the law department, I, I agree with that 100%. It's useful information to the council because oftentimes we'll have a supplemental appropriation when something's being paid for with the proceeds of a lawsuit, so it'd be good information for the, for the council to, to be aware of. So we had an inventory of, of everything that came in so that we're not surprised when, when those, you know, when we find out that a supplemental appropriation is being covered by X number of dollars. So perhaps that's, pardon me, sir, perhaps that's an issue for, or a request from the Department of Finance.
For, for the moment, I can tell you that.
I have that as a follow-up item.
Unlike the, the information that was asked by the chair that we provide, which is a list of all the lawyers or law firms that we have hired on contract, what they're working on and approximately what they're paid, that can be provided pretty readily. The kind of analysis that you're talking about, unless Mr. Klein is aware of some information that I'm not, I think is a longer-term project.
Probably is, but we'll start working on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Klein. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Riceinger.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Mr. Nelson, I'm hoping you can answer or maybe the right direction. I'm also going to answer, ask this question to the state's attorney's office. So the question is, is that regards to John letters when it comes to prostitution. The years I've been in the council, what happens is the major from, from that police district, they would get the tag number of the, of the John, and he would, they would send, the major would send a letter to his house. We were told, we were told that they could no longer, the police could no longer do that. Can you give me your opinion on that? Why can't, why can I, why can't the police send a letter to that, I call them the John, the one that's driving around the neighborhood, they got his license tag? Why can't they send that letter in a letters package, like, we have seen that you are driving around in our neighborhood, you know what I mean?
Without, without, without a valid tag on your car or just driving around?
That is what I can't.
I'm sorry, that they're driving around, just generally because they're driving around or they're driving around without a, without a, an act of valid registration?
No, no, what I'm trying to say to you is that they're driving around trying to pick up, wanting to pick up prostitutes.
Right.
So they could live over in East Baltimore and they come over Southwest Baltimore, and they're driving around this block in this neighborhood to pick up a prostitute, and the police got the tag number, okay? They don't catch them in action, but they have the tag number. In the past, they were sending, we called them John letters to, to the Johns, and it was, it was working, there was a success stories on some of them, but now we're told that the law department.
They're told by lawyers, by, by legal affairs, probably, yeah. You say they're told by lawyers and legal affairs out of the police department?
I can't really hear, it's sort of muffled.
Are you, are you saying that the police department was advised by our lawyers at the police department that they can't do that anymore?
They were advised by the police department, they could no longer send out those John letters.
I'm sorry, but my, my, I'm trying to find out whether the advice starts from lawyers in my law department or from somebody in the police department?
What is, I mean, can you give me a, your opinion to someone in your office?
Well, I can imagine why somebody might have given that advice. I have no idea whether we gave such advice or what the thinking was of the lawyer. But if you have, just imagine, let's say the police department decided that folks who were moving around aimlessly on the sidewalk in a neighborhood, congregating near, you know, a corner trouble spot bar or a packaged goods store, so folks who are not doing anything illegal but are walking in such a way that it arouses the suspicion of the police department as to what they're really about, okay? Or driving cars around, you know, deserving the John letters. I can see some thoughtful lawyer saying, you can't really target those folks who are not doing anything illegal by sending John letters or letters to folks who are pedestrians looking like they're maybe up to no good. But I don't know that, Councilman, and I'm happy to talk to the legal affairs folks to see if that issue has come before them.
Okay, I, I'll follow up on that. The other, my other question is, if you could answer this, I mean, when the state's attorney comes in, I'll be asking her also, but regards to dirt bikes, okay?
Yes, sir.
We used to, the police used to be able to go into a backyard or front yard and confiscate the dirt bikes because they're illegal. I heard today from one of the majors in my district that they, they were told, okay, that they could no longer confiscate the dirt bikes in.
Well, dirt, the law prohibits the driving of dirt bikes in the city. It does not prohibit the possession of dirt bikes in the city. So if you have a dirt bike with a cold engine, in other words, it hasn't been operated within the last few minutes, or it hasn't been seen operating, I don't think you can seize it. You can seize it if you saw somebody operating it, you can seize it if somebody's getting on it and about to drive away in it, and the rare instance, you can seize it when you're following the dirt bike and the operator's on the dirt bike. But the, the law, very clearly, the law passed by the council after much discussion a number of years ago, does not make the mere possession of a dirt bike in Baltimore City illegal. And that's because the dirt bike advocates said at the time, we are, we, we can lawfully drive our dirt bikes outside of the city, we want the city or the county to provide us a dirt bike track somewhere, and so you can't make the mere possession of dirt bikes, or you shouldn't make it illegal. And the council agreed with that argument, right or wrong, but that's the deal. Right now, you can possess them, but you can't drive them in the city.
Okay, so they have to be confiscated off of private property, if it's in the street or alley, then they can confiscate.
Only if they're being operated. Only if they're being operated. If they're, if they're other, you know, if they're just sitting there, and I think they have to be registered, is my recollection, I think they've got to have plates and I'm not even sure about that. But I, I know that mere possession is not illegal, driving is illegal.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
I'm going, let me go back to the issue of claims and notifying, and ask you a question. I'm, I'm talking about mainly Public Works claims. That's what we most, I mostly get. It's, and if I get a police claim, I, I just go with the person to IID. I don't put in a claim, I just go with them. So here's what I would like to ask you. I tell all my constituents that negligence is required for them to have a valid claim to, to the city for damage done because of negligence.
Correct.
On the part of the city, therefore, somebody told them about a problem and they can document that it was, it was told to the city. It wasn't fixed, it happened, so they, they have some standing. I'm not a lawyer, so I use these words freely. So, oh, you asked for blocks, I mean, the 1500 block of Abbottston, the 1700 block of East 35th Street, on and on, for multiple issues of the same problem time and time again. And the only claim in those two blocks that I ever recall was one that I just, I just stayed on it till the lady got $10,000. It was the third time on East 35th. But she was persistent, so I could be persistent, so it took years, but she got her $10,000. Oh, and it's backed up again since then. Here's what I'm asking the law department. Are we authorized here as members of the Baltimore City Council to define negligence by law in the case of claims against the city? Could we put in a law that would describe negligence in terms of the City of Baltimore's claim forms? Not, I mean, I'd be glad to limit it to Public Works.
Well, I, I would, rather than talk about putting a law in that defines negligence, because that's a term that has been used for hundreds of years and generally defined by the courts. But you could, unless David Ralph disagrees with me when I tell you what I'm about to tell you, you could put a law in that says Baltimore City will, will pay claims made by citizens under the following circumstances.
Whoa.
If you, you know, you're going to get a nice fiscal note, probably, but I don't know of any, I don't know of any principle that says that you cannot, within the constraints of sound fiscal policy, create an, an activity that if the city engages in it, or if we, if we fail, that we have to pay a citizen who suffers damages.
Okay, I don't mean to.
Hillary will tell me I'm wrong, or David will tell me I'm wrong, either while I'm standing here or after I leave the room, but I think you have the authority to, to establish a basis for liability in the future. Do it carefully. Don't, don't masquerade like you're defining negligence. Just say, we, 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 we pass a law that says, if we do this to our citizens, then maybe subject to some cap or some process or whatever, we should be paying their damages.
Well, and, and I will say to you that the reason I'm asking is my record of failure working with my constituents. I mean, I don't, I don't get involved if they just woke up one day, the sewer backed up, it was the first time it ever happened in all my life, Mary, for 30 years. That's not negligence, that's like, something happened. And then.
Right.
If we find out what it was and it's a problem, the city should fix, and then we let the city know and then it happens again, now you're in.
Well, but you know, sometimes, sometimes, Councilwoman, the city comes out and fixes a problem. Let's say the problem might be roots and grease and rags in your line, okay? That happens all the time. City comes out, cleans the line, clears the line, everything is working fine. Guess what happens six months later? More root, more roots, more grease, more stuff, and sometimes that came from the neighbor, sometimes it came from the complaining citizen.
Restaurant up the street.
Or the restaurant up the street, right.
That's what everybody says.
Doesn't necessarily mean that we didn't clean it out properly, or that we had reason to believe that the restaurant up the street was going to put their dumb rags in the line again, or the neighbor was going to do it.
But, but in that case, we know that, and so neighbors get agreements from the city. By the way, I love Public Works, but you know, it's big and it's full of sewage.
What's the old expression? It happens.
It happens.
Right.
So in those cases, what we say is, regular attention to clearing and maintaining this line.
So just, I think I answered your question, you can pass a law, but watch out for the fiscal note.
Well, I'm, I'm just, okay, I'm, I'll leave it alone from now on, but you just.
Unless David or Hillary tell you that I'm misleading you.
Well, tell me now, because it's the closest I've ever come to getting something to happen.
I, I would just add to that, what George said at the end, which is that, and you actually, Councilwoman, mentioned it, which is that these cases have to be looked at for their facts because there, there could be many different reasons that there are backups. And that's why the law allows there to be a process for those facts to come out and to determine whether or not it was actually the city's fault as opposed to something else. If you passed a law that generally just said X or Y, then the city pays, then you would remove that process, that evaluation process that the law gives to everyone else in the state.
And you, but you could address that by saying, okay, you could address that by saying, if the law department fines through its investigative capacity that A, B, C, and D, then it shall pay the claim. So you could create a process for determining those facts if you want to. I would just say that if you're going to go down this road, you and your colleagues should do it very carefully because it would have significant implications for good and bad.
It's something I never would have dreamed of, but let me just say, there is no process. What I will do with my, because everybody's just turned down automatically, it's just an automatic, don't tell, oh, please don't tell me it's not automatic. I've been doing this for years. When we get some response is when I will go with a constituent who's been turned down to small claims court. At that point, an attorney has to address the thing. So then we get to go through a process, and then usually my constituents win because, you know, the, the ones who go to small claims are legitimately aggrieved. So, but it's, all right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Certainly. Councilman Mosby.
Hey, George, two quick questions. One regarding the city levying lawsuits on corporations or businesses or individuals that are harming Baltimore City residents, particularly around like lead paint poisoning. I know that we've seen throughout the country some recent lawsuits that have popped up, specifically going after lead paint, lead paint manufacturers from 40 and 50 years ago. I think there was a large lawsuit in California that was held up in higher courts. What's the process or procedure of your office determining if that's something that you're interested in? Do you kind of just take the?
Well, I could tell you, so, so some years ago, this was like 2008, 2009, there was legislation introduced in Annapolis which would have facilitated suits against the corporations responsible for lead paint poisoning, which we were asked to support and which we did. It didn't pass, that's a controversial subject in Annapolis. Other than the fact that, I know that HCD and the Housing Authority are regularly defendants in those lawsuits because much of the housing either started out in their hands or has ended up in their hands, and those lawsuits are handled by lawyers retained by them, not by the law department, because it's, it's Housing Authority, which is outside of our territory. So there, you know, there's no set process. If you or your colleagues want us to take a focused look at what could we do proactively to address lead paint issues in the city, given our powers, which are, are significant but not endless, we're happy to take a look at it.
Yeah, I would, with both hands raised.
Start us, start a conversation, you know, as soon as this process, so as we come out of the budget process, then we're happy to engage with you.
And then last question, I know that we talked about this a little earlier, minority women-owned businesses and the increased funding and budget there. Are there any initiatives or programs in place to create more awareness and help facilitate from a technical assistance perspective, you know, the increase of minority and women-owned businesses?
I can't give you chapter and verse from within the MWU office, but I know that that's one of Courtney Billups' high priorities, is to increase outreach, increase the extent to which minority businesses understand the rules, and reduce the number of instances, and we've seen them, the council president and others of us who, who sit with the Board of Estimates every week, seen instances where minority contractors and subcontractors have lost out because they didn't do it properly. So we, there is a, there is a program in place to try to reduce the extent to which that happens. Because nobody should lose, in a perfect world, the right to participate in an MBEWVE contract because they, because they made a mistake.
Now, is that a new? Now, is that a new initiative, or that, that's been in place for some time?
That's on MBU's initiative, and it may also be something that's going on within the mayor's office. I'm not familiar with the, exactly what they're doing, but I know that Courtney Billups is a big believer in that. And, and I can get him, I'll have him get back to you and let you know exactly what we are doing and what his plans are in that respect.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanna, I'm not gonna rehash the water main claims, I mean, you know, the sewage backup claims. I wanna talk about the claims that people put in for their cars. You know, our streets are some of the worst, I would say, in the state, and we have all these plates everywhere, you know, the metal plates in the street.
And we have potholes, and, yes, I'm familiar with many of them.
And people really damaged their cars really bad. I got a text yesterday, I thought it was on this phone, but it's not, where a young lady asked the question, will she be compensated? I told her file a claim with the law department, but I also told her good luck, because I know, what the law department oftentimes say is, no one notified us of a defect, you know, so we can't be held accountable.
Again, it's, the issue or the principle is the same, and we see these kinds of accidents, and we pay some, and some we don't. So, if there's a pothole, if there's a plate that's been put there by the city. If it was put there by the city and it was done badly, and it, and it doesn't accommodate the smooth flow of traffic, then we're gonna be liable for a lousy job of putting a plate there. But more often what happens is potholes develop during the winter, sometimes they're obvious, sometimes they're not, some, you know, if they're real obvious, and if they're brought, especially if they're brought to the attention of the city and we don't tend to them, and somebody then drives over a very hard-to-see pothole and causes $1,000 damage to their axle, you know, they should be filing a claim with us. We might not pay it, but, you know, we, we do pay them when the pothole and the condition of the street is something that is or should be known to us.
That's the part I'm talking about, we might not pay them, but it's clearly...
Well, we might not, because it might've, the, the pothole might've only developed yesterday, and we've seen situations like that, where there was a flash, there was a, a heavy rainstorm, and the pothole that wasn't there on Monday is there on Wednesday. I drive on streets like that all the time, where potholes come and potholes go.
But, but these potholes are not...
Every pothole is different.
Yeah, but these are not potholes that just popped up overnight. We have potholes that's deepest...
If they've been there for a while and we haven't done anything about it, we're probably gonna get nailed.
Mm-hmm. Well, who would determine whether a plate is there properly or not? See, we can always play on words and interpretation, because you can ride over there and say, "Well, this plate looked like it's there, and it shouldn't have caused a problem," but it did. This woman has substantial damage to her car.
Then you go, and you look at it, you, you go, you look at it, you photograph it, sometimes you bring somebody else in who's got some expertise to evaluate it. It's just the same as the situations that we encounter all the time, where there's a, you know, there's a, a change of a quarter inch in a, in the level of a piece of the sidewalk versus the sidewalk next to it. People trip on those little quarter inch separations, and sometimes they get hurt real bad. And, you know, you gotta figure out, so what's the, what's the dividing line between just a modest difference or a difference that we're responsible for? So, we do it, you know, face-by-face basis.
Well, you know, being on the Board of Estimates, I, I see a lot and I watch a lot, and I seen where we had paid out some money to a woman who claimed she fell in a, a hole.
Yep.
But yet, there was a young girl who had fell and tripped in a hole right near City Hall, and she was denied. And, and she had substantial medical bills, she came to my office...
I gotta know lots more facts about those two holes.
Yeah, but she was denied, so how do you determine who to pay and who not to pay?
Sometimes, people who fall in holes say, "I live in that neighborhood, I've seen that hole for the last three months, I walk by that hole every day, I don't understand why they don't fix it." So, the question is, well, how come on Wednesday, that hole that you've been looking at for three months, you stepped in it? "Well, I was taking a shortcut."
Well, I'm gonna lose this one, I, 'cause we gonna go back and forth...
Look, we can go on forever.
We gonna go back and forth, and we'll be here all day long, because...
Oh, they're just gonna get filled.
Yeah, that don't get filled.
A hole is a hole is a hole.
Or another claim that don't get paid. All right. But we should take responsibility, but we should take responsibility, because we need to, you know, every year, every three years, we do a water and sewer increase. And most of it is because of digging up the streets and trying to fix the pipes. We lay those metal things there, they lay there for years, two, three years.
And I should mention, by the way, every, every claimant who's denied has the right to ask for their denial to be reviewed and appealed in the law department, and that's done either by Matthew Maiden or me, or Ernie Wickham.
I tell them to do that too. But what I'm saying is...
We don't, we don't have anything else to, no, no, we're happy, we're, that's fine. If they appeal them, we'll look at them, we do.
Well, well, I, I'm just under the opinion, just like our city buildings, that is not being taken care of, we need to take care of our streets as well, you know, so, we're responsible.
Anybody else? Mr. Nelson, thank you, thank...
No, it's me, I wanna talk long.
Well, I won't leave, I'll stick around. If you think of another one, you know, we can interrupt the Inspector General or Marilyn Mosby.
She's not coming until 2:00, so if you wanna sit there until 2:00, wait for her.
Oh, okay, so I'll be gone by then.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks, all your folks.
I'll stick around for a few minutes.
Okay, all right. Next, next is the Office of the Inspector General. And here's, here's our plan, folks. We're gonna do the Office of the Inspector General, and then we're gonna break until 2:00, and come back for Ms. Mosby at 2:00, okay? I think you were here, Mr. Prey, when everybody did the introductions, and you know everybody, so I'm not going back through it, okay?
Okay.
All right, it's all yours.
Mr. President, I guess Madam Chair has stepped out. Distinguished members, thank you for inviting us to testify before you today on our FY17 budget for the Office of Inspector General. Hopefully, you have some materials that we put together and forwarded in advance, including our organization chart and our slide, it's up on the screen as we speak. So, when you look at the, the budget and look at our bottom line of approximately three-quarters of a million dollars, what doesn't jump out at you is the unique aspect of the OIG budget, the fact that a good portion of our budget authority comes from reimbursements from other agencies. Over a third, in fact, so when you add that back in, our total budget for FY17 is $1,224,000 approximately. As a result of the enhancement that we've requested for FY17 in the form of an additional agent, that amounts to an increase of about $154,000 or a 14% increase. I mentioned that enhancement, that is intended to work on emerging problem, which we're focusing on, and that is workers' comp and disability fraud. To date, we've worked primarily with the fire department and the police department in that area. We believe that there's also fertile field in the Department of Transportation and Public Works. We intend to, in FY17, begin to look into those agencies as well. What I'd like to do, and of course, our FY16 annual report, which is required by the executive order that created our office, is due September 1st, and that'll have a total run-up of all our statistics and all our performance measures for FY16, plus a number of case summaries and other data about initiatives and goals of the offices and so on. What I'd like to do is go over some of that data as a little bit of an advanced peek year-to-date, since we're just about to, to the end of the fiscal year, and give you some idea of what we've been doing over the past year and some of the statistics that we've amounted. So, at the beginning of FY16, we had 125 cases open. New intakes, new complaints coming in year-to-date during the fiscal year is 116. We've managed to close out 123 cases by various means. Thirty-three of those were internal referrals, nine were external referrals, 62 were cases that were not sustained for one, one reason or another. Seven cases were sustained and wound up into a prosecution or possibly a termination. And then we had 10 cases that just were closed early because of jurisdiction orders, they were, situations, they were just declined. As far as the categories of cases, the, the primary area, as I mentioned, is workers' comp and disability fraud. We have over 40 cases in that area currently open. Embezzlement by employees is another area, bribery and kickbacks, abuse of power. We get a lot of human resources-type complaints, which include things like sexual harassment and hostile management practices. We had during FY16 one fairly major sexual harassment case that probably occupied a good one-third of a full investigator work year. We also have a number of contract irregularities cases that covers things like noncompliance, overbilling, and attempted contract steering. We also look at payroll irregularities. We have a number of theft of time cases, leave abuse, and last but not least, city, misuse of city computers, primarily unfortunately. We've had a number of pornography cases, some of which have usually resulted in termination. As far as breaking the cases down by agency, again, police and fire are now at the top by virtue of workers' comp and disability. We have 27 fire, 26 police, 12 public works cases, 12 DOT cases, eight finance, seven health, five housing, five wrecked parks, three MOIT, Mayor's Office of Information Technology, and then other, a whole variety, including convention center, municipal telephone exchange, parking authority, et cetera. A significant portion of our cases are the proactive evaluations. That's the first responsibility that we've been levied in that executive order, which requires us to promote efficiency, accountability, and integrity through city government. And under that responsibility, we take a look at internal controls and processes and procedures, and see areas where we can help agencies and departments tighten up and hopefully prevent the types of fraud, waste, and abuse that, that we see from time to time. Frequently, those weaknesses get revealed as a result of reactive cases that, that we get, and we'll go in and make recommendations and help them fix the, the weakness. In the area of evaluations, we have 11 currently that are open. One looking citywide at our information technology infrastructure and the network topology. We believe there are numerous opportunities where we can economize on lease lines, combine operations, and, and basically consolidate our networks, and there's potential there for significant savings, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, we're gonna be looking at that and hopefully putting out a report on that in early FY17. Physical security measures citywide is another issue that has come up as a result of our investigations, where we'll go out to look at for stolen equipment and investigate on scene, and what about the, the video cameras, that it turns out they're pointed at the sky, they're not working, no one knows how to operate the DVR, that we see that alarm's not being used, a whole variety of issues like this. So, we're doing surveys citywide, first to, to take an inventory, to see what we've got out there, but then to make sure that it's working and that people know how to use these security measures. Hopefully, that will be able to curtail equipment being stolen, materials being stolen, and so on. Cell phone utilization is a, a big topic. We were hoping to get a report out on that by the end of FY16. There's been some delay in getting documents of all of the cell phones that the city is using. We've identified a full, about a quarter of a million dollars' worth of, of lines that are basically being unused. No data, no, no texts, no telephone calls. We're trying to get behind that and find out why that is. One of the scenarios that we looked at, certainly this came up in the parking authority, the parking pass review that we did and published last year, we find that people leave city employment, they turn in their parking pass, it gets put into a drawer and doesn't get returned to the parking authority or reissued, and we wind up continuing to pay for that. As a result of the parking pass review that we did, Kevin, we were able to save, I believe, over $50,000 in parking passes annually.
Fiscal note.
I'm sorry?
Ricky, wait, wait till I say it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. We suspect that that situation may be taking place to some degree for, for cell phones as well, that remains to be seen. Additionally, the asset management obviously is an issue that is high on our radar citywide. We find that we buy a lot of valuable personal property, like computers, iPads, and so on, and it never gets entered into any type of inventory management system. It doesn't get a unique serial number, it walks, and we wind up buying the same thing last, the next year. Last year, we issued our report on purchase card abuse, one particular situation where an individual had charged over $12,000 in personal items, electronics and so on, on the, on the purchase card. We've, as a result of the review and working with purchases, a number of cards have been canceled, and we're hoping, hoping to help further tighten up the use of purchase cards. Human resources structure and HR data compliance, this is an issue that we've identified for some time now as a weakness citywide. We've got a number of diverse HR elements within various agencies and departments, not all necessarily singing from the same sheet of music, and we see variations in the way that we carry out HR policies and procedures and maintain personnel data. Due to recent events of about a, a month or so ago involving employee data, this, this type of scenario really needs a, a close look, and that's one of the things high on our radar as well. Last but not least, workers' comp structure and process. As part of our investigation of workers' comp and disability fraud cases, we've realized that there may be some issues in the way we work these cases. Frequently, we see recidivists, where we have a number of workers' comp claims from an individual, and then all of a sudden, they will then apply for permanent disability. Last year, we were able to stop two of those permanent disabilities with savings of about $2 million. We're working with the law department to, to look at the management of the workers' comp process, and hopefully, there will be additional savings and even recoveries of benefits already paid out as we go forward. That covers the evaluations. Let me talk a little bit about, one of the things, one of the initiatives that we've done in FY16, you're, I'm sure you're all familiar with the lean initiative. We've adopted a lean process. One of our, our lean goal was to improve our case management and case throughput. We realized that our rate of closing cases within a one-year cycle was only 45%. That was not good enough, we wanted to increase that to 60%. So, we've identified a number of lean countermeasures that we've been able to implement, and as a result, we're, we find that we're able to get cases closed out quicker and enable us to focus more on our high priority cases. focus more on our high-priority cases. If you look back to those numbers that I mentioned right off the bat, we've opened one hundred and sixteen this year, but we've closed one hundred and twenty-three. So, you know, we're starting to increase our number of closures and hopefully be able to bring our caseload down. Let me talk a little bit about some accomplishments and statistics. You're all familiar with the Quarantine Road landfill case. I spoke about that last year at the budget hearing. There have been a total of twelve prosecutions in connection with that case, six city employees and six trash and scrap haulers, okay? Two of those were convicted in FY15. There have been nine convictions in FY16. Most have been sentenced. Two will be sentenced later this month, and then there's one left remaining to go to trial, and that's set for September of 2016. I am happy to announce to all of you that so far, there's court-ordered restitution in the amount of seven point eight million dollars. That will hopefully be coming back to the city in connection with that case, and that number may increase as the two additional sentencings happen later this month and the one trial happens in September. That was obviously a marquee case for us, and we worked that in partnership with the FBI, the state police, and of course, the U.S. Attorney's Office. Other cases, Investment Management Enterprise, that was the company that was providing contractors to Moit. They entered a guilty plea, one count of theft, over one hundred thousand dollars, and at sentencing, the Office of Inspector General happily took custody of a check for a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars payable back to the city. That was obviously a success. Another case, Express Auctions. We've found that the auction company at the abandoned vehicle yard had, were unilaterally collecting an additional administrative fee on sales. We discovered that and worked with purchasing to disallow those fees, and the total was over fifty thousand dollars. We hope to be able to recoup that money. That will, of course, be made available for the purchasers who had to pay those fees. In connection with the forestry contract for tree removal and pruning, we discovered overbilling of approximately thirty thousand dollars, and we're hoping that that's going to be offset in the very near future against that contract. A number, short of prosecutions, a number of our cases have resulted in terminations of employees. One was a Wreckin' Parks employee terminated for sexual solicitation of a minor. There is a criminal case that was pending. A DOT employee was terminated for stealing a constituent's vehicle by, through deception. Unfortunately, we have a finance employee and a DPW employee terminated for misusing their city computers for purposes of pornography. That's a, kind of a quick snapshot. Again, all of our detailed performance measures and statistics will be coming out in our FY16 annual report due September 1st. We'll be drafting that over the summer, and it'll have a lot of good vignettes in there about various cases that we've worked over the fiscal year.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for recovering a lot of our money that was being stolen from the City of Baltimore. We don't want to see any money stolen when we could use it for our programs. But I'm concerned about the workers' compensation and those kind of things that you talked about earlier. Have that decreased in any sense? You have your offices in these different agencies, because I notice each agency have allotted money for an agent within their department.
Correct. The agents that we have dedicated to DOT and DPW are primarily working employee misconduct cases, theft of time, contractor irregularities, and so on. The agent that we do have dedicated to fire and police has been focusing largely on workers' comp and disability. We're hoping the additional workers' comp person that we bring on in '17 will be able to focus on the fire and police aspect and allow us to start branching out, looking at DOT and DPW workers' comp and disability. Our sense is that it's large. These are people that are working with machinery, you know, working out in the streets and so on, but we have not really scratched the surface on that yet.
Okay, because that was my concern, like in DPW, you get employees calling you about various things, supplies missing that the city have already purchased, and work being done that's, you know, on the city time when it shouldn't be done, contractors. And I don't know whether it's true or not, but they call us about their breaking things so that they can have to come and fix it, or saying they fixed things that they did not fix and getting paid for it. These are the things, I don't know about other council people, but they call my office with this kind of stuff. So if you have an agent in there, those are the kind of things I want them to be looking at, you know, selling city equipment and those kind of things, and putting in false claims for work that they haven't even performed. Those are the things.
Those are certainly the issue, types of issue areas that we're very interested in learning about. You know, we get a lot of those types of calls directly to our hotline, frequently from employees who want to remain anonymous, but certainly, you know, any calls in that nature that come to your office or other council members, please, you know, forward them to us.
I try to refer them to you, and I tell them to come there. I don't know whether they're coming or not, but I tell them to go there, because I tell them when we report stuff to you, you do look into it.
Absolutely.
I just want to thank you for doing that.
Councilwoman Inspector.
Mr. Pierce, your work is bringing in more revenue than increasing property tax. The work that you're doing is bringing more money than if we would raise the property tax. I just have a few questions. When we go after these bums, do we use our city solicitor, or do you use outside counsel for this?
So if we have procedural questions of a legal nature, we'll take those to the law department, but if we're working a criminal case, you know, we'll very early on bring in, present that to the state's attorney's office and get a preliminary prosecutorial opinion.
So we use the state's attorney's attorneys if we go to trial, if we go to court?
Correct.
Not city solicitors?
Correct, yes. Not all of our cases rise to the level of, you know, evidentiary, you know, status that the state's attorney's office expects, but a number of them do. For instance, I mentioned the Investment Management Enterprise case, and, you know, that was a case where clearly we had laid out that the city had been overbilled, padded hours on invoices submitted by independent services contractors. That was successfully prosecuted. It did not go to trial, resulted in a plea agreement, and as part of that, the company agreed to pay back that one hundred and sixty-five K.
That was the next question, Mr. Pierce. When it's payback, where does the money go?
So that is a very good question, and that's something that we're working carefully, because we have a number of cases now where there's both federal and state court-ordered restitution, plus we have other cases where we've used the law department to go after people civilly. If it's not, doesn't rise to the level of criminal evidence, we'll go after them civilly and recoup the money, you know, for the city. So there are monies coming in from a variety of areas. We've gotten checks actually from people making court-ordered restitution to our office, payable to the Office of Inspector General. So we have to work with probation, we're working with the law department collections, we've created a spreadsheet of all these various, basically, reimbursements that we're going to be receiving, and...
Does it ever make its way to the general funds?
Right. In fact, where it is, the wrong payee, we'll go back to them and make them, start making those payable to Director of Finance.
Do you have a figure for how much funds did go back to general funds this year?
I don't have that off the...
An inspector general for the inspector general. Show us the money, that's what I want to see.
One of the problems is, for instance, Andrew Wilson, who was a DOT employee who was criminally convicted by the state's attorney's office in fiscal 2015, had taken over seventy thousand dollars in fraudulent overtime and was ordered to pay that back, okay? He's paying ten dollars a month.
In everybody's lifetime. But let me ask you something. When an employee like that is caught so red-handed and owes us so much money, do they lose their benefits, their maybe pension or whatever it is that they had earned when they were employed by the City of Baltimore?
I would defer to BBMR, maybe the law department.
We shouldn't be rewarding people who are such outright, have cost us so much money.
It would probably be whatever the terms of the pension are. Obviously, these are the kinds of things we can, we know, assets we know, so we can garnish them a lot more easily if they owe us money. We would fulfill our own garnishment request, so, I mean, we may end up getting it, getting essentially the same result in a different way.
I just mean, as part of a policy, if somebody does that, would they be recipients of a pension when they're fired? Could they get that benefit? Do they forfeit it? It doesn't seem right to me, that, it should be a question, it should be a policy, that if you have defrauded and you have been left, we should be taking it out of his pension if he's cutting a pension.
Certainly, the gentleman that I just mentioned, he was a relatively new employee, a young individual, had only been with the city a few years, so he would not have been vested in the pension plan.
Ones who get caught after being with us for twenty years or whatever the vested period is. I don't know why that's not part of what you do in terms of closing it out.
Councilwoman, that would require some significant change in the law, I believe, wouldn't it?
Well, that's what we do.
Federal law says if you work and you've already earned your benefit, you know, we can't, for example, ask them to pay us back for twenty years of their paycheck, even though they defrauded us, but...
They don't deserve it anymore if they have been, if they've been found guilty of such heinous situations for the city, having done so much damage to the city.
Retirement benefits aren't attachable, right?
Well, it just, it depends on the particular situation, but we can garnish, you know, assets that we know that they have in order to make ourselves whole.
What if we are providing that?
Right, I mean, and that's a question probably of federal labor relations laws. Are you able to remove people's vested rights and vested pension rights, and under what circumstances? So just be dependent.
Created the inspector general, we were looking after people who were doing damage as city employees or with the city. That was what the inspector general was brought in, and fortunately, we have it. It doesn't make sense that you don't show me the money from the point where that person has done something so egregious, and this Mr. Wilson, is he collecting a pension from the city?
He is not, because he was not vested. But I know for a fact there have been other situations where we've had employees that had accrued benefits, that in the normal course, they could have been paid out for those benefits, like vacation time and comp time and so on. Those payments have been offset against money they owed the city. It's kind of a case-by-case basis.
Did from, it was deducted?
Correct.
I just would like to know if you need to look at yourself, at your own entity, and see maybe there's some, money is slipping through the cracks that the city should be getting or the city shouldn't be spending as a result of your great efforts. I think we need to look at that, or we need to understand. I can't seem to find it anywhere, and I don't hear it in your report. Do you also go after the people that you're suspicious of doing things that are in the Department of Education? What I'm thinking of, those quasi's that are state and city, liquor board, the quasi's.
Right. The Baltimore City Public School system is a state agency.
That's exactly why I'm asking. But they're city employees.
So traditionally, we have not had jurisdiction over the school system. However, the city, it's city money.
Right.
We believe that we should have jurisdiction, and particularly in the areas of contracting for things like construction and paving.
There's plenty of places for trouble with, where money is part of the activity, and so I'm not sure whether we need the law department, or the finance department, or the mayor's office to take a look and see how we can maximize the benefit in terms of when there are recover, restitution money, when we don't have to spend money for people who have done the wrong thing with our money or with the trust that we had in them. I think that should be a boilerplate operation for the inspector general. Does the inspector general need an inspector general?
One of the things I mentioned earlier that we're trying to do is get our arms around all of these various folks. We've created a spreadsheet. I actually discovered that there was one from 2012, a DPW employee who has court-ordered restitution. It's up to the courts in criminal cases to collect this money, and frequently, the probation officers keep track of it.
The judge makes the decision. But it should be something that we, as the city, put on the front burner in terms of how do we recoup, how does that money come back?
Councilwoman, we're going to come around on a second round to you. We got other folks, okay?
I just haven't gotten enough answers to, are we going to be able to build a better mousetrap, and if we are, who is going to do it?
Okay. We see this, obviously, as something that we need to address, and we're collecting all of these different scenarios, and we're going to start tracking them and policing them to make sure we do get the money back.
I can tell you, Mr. Pierce, in my experience, so much is slipping through the cracks. I don't want that to be my opinion of the inspector general's job.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two quick questions. Under Service 836, Inspector General, under the performance measures, amount saved and recovered due to investigations, do you have a ballpark figure for where we're at for fiscal year '16? And I apologize if you said this earlier.
Yeah, so for fiscal year '16, we've had this, and one of the things I discussed last year was the fact that it's very much like a roller coaster, because a lot of our cases are multi-year. They don't necessarily get resolved within a one-year. For instance, the Quarantine Road landfill case started in 2012, and, you know, obviously, seven point eight million dollars, that is a spike in, you know, the savings and recoveries as a result of the court-ordered restitution. Again, that's subject to collections, you know, which could happen, you know, for years to come, but, so we try not to, we try not to ramp up our goal too far as a result of very successful cases that we have in every given year. We're trying to make it a slow, you know, gradual increase. That's why we targeted seven hundred and fifty K in '15. We had those two disabilities that, cases that we were able to prevent, which ramped up our savings and recoveries to two point three million for FY15. You know, so based on that, and you can see the two point six million there, the actual for '15, based on that, we raised it to seven fifty and to a million for '17. Once this landfill case, you know, goes through the pipeline, you know, things will settle down some, but we're anticipating that in the years to come, '17 and so on, will have even more successes in this workers' comp and disability area, particularly... even more successes in this workers' comp and disability area, particularly as we start to gear up on the civil side to pursue these folks and get a lot of the money back that's already been paid out.
Makes complete sense, and certainly wasn't suggesting to ramp up the target. I think you guys are doing great work, and you're probably one of the only agencies in the city that actually has a positive ROI that's quantifiable, so it seems to make sense to think about how we can better publicize the great work that you guys are doing, so that folks know that there are agencies within city government that are keeping an eye on things.
I can't hear the question.
It wasn't a question.
It wasn't a question.
I didn't hear what you said.
Sure. I wasn't suggesting that the goal be ramped up for fiscal year '17, I was acknowledging the great work that this agency is doing, and pointing out the fact that it's one of the very few agencies in the city that has a positive ROI that is quantifiable, and I think we need to do more to publicize that as a city, to assure people that there are folks that are actually keeping an eye on money and operations within city government. The second question had to do with your org chart, I noticed that there's two vacant positions, investigations lead agent, and then an agent position, are those still vacant?
They are, unfortunately, in '16, we had four departures, retention is an issue, a lot of our folks, we have a lot of accountants, CPAs, I encourage everybody to get their certified fraud examiner certification, and they become marketable, and there's Washington, DC, 40 miles to our south, this past year, I lost one to the HOD IG, we lost another one to the Washington Metropolitan Transit IG, and I lost my deputy, the lead agent, to the FBI. So, it's a constant uphill battle to get and retain folks, where I'm hoping to ramp up the compensation and, you know, be able to be more successful within the retention category.
And are there any efforts underway to try and attract city residents to these positions?
So, we do have several city residents in the office, unfortunately, my deputy, who lived in your district, departed last year, you know, so we lost that one. We don't really post that as a requirement, but obviously, it's a plus, and I have a residence in the city, my special assistant does, and, you know, most of the folks live certainly within the Beltway, but it's a goal, it's not always achievable, but, you know, I'm certainly aware of the council's impetus in that area, and, you know, we would hope to be able to achieve that accordingly.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosby, and let me remind all my colleagues that even though the hearing is not being broadcast live at this time, it is being recorded, so please speak into the mics so everybody can get the recording, okay?
Sir, yes, sir.
Thank you.
First and foremost, IG, I kind of wanted to piggyback off of what my colleague Eric Costello said, I think your organization does a tremendous job, your reports are always real thorough, they seem very timely, extremely responsive, and I would like to thank you for the work that you do. I say that knowing that there's limited resources that we've actually applied to you to do a very important and critical role to ensure that we're protecting the sanctity of Baltimore City residents' dollars as relates through these agencies and through contractors and employees. With all of that said, has there ever been any talk associated with some of the wins that you receive, a formula that would go back into operating budget associated with the inspector general? I know that, you know, many state and local and federal agencies kind of have that agreement associated with it, which provides more coverage for you to constantly go after these things as well as, you know, develop new and innovative ways of, you know, securing and bringing back money to the city. Has that ever been talked about with the administration or with the finance department?
It has not, it's certainly a discussion that I would be amenable to having, obviously, with our limited resources, there are a number of issue areas that we would wish we could address and would like to address, you know, we can't do everything, so prioritization is a key factor, but certainly, we would be amenable to that type of discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it just, again, piggybacks on Costello's point around the return of investment, and, I mean, you're operating with 10 folks and a pretty miniscule budget, but you're going after some pretty aggressive things that are really important to the city. My second question is more of just me trying to be Inspector Gadget or something, I don't know what I call myself, but do you have undercover, or has it, has ever been talked about to have undercover agents inside of city agencies, and does that go against any labor issues, does that go against any union-related issues, has that ever been talked about?
Certainly, with our small numbers, you know, in our office, we would not have the resources to be able to-
I'm looking to grow your budget, so if we're able to do that, does that make sense, or has that ever been talked about?
That's actually timely, I've talked with Commissioner Davis about the possibility of working, collaborating with the police department, and using police officers potentially in that type of a role. We haven't, you know, discussed specific scenarios, but it's certainly, it's on the table, and it's something that, you know, we're both interested in pursuing.
Because just the mere factor of if we decided to go down that route, I think that that would help give folks a lot of motivation to do the right things when the cameras are on, so, you know, any help that I can provide on this council, that we can provide on this council, my limited time left, you know, I would love to help provide that, but we need to continue to grow your agency, you're doing a tremendous job for the citizens of Baltimore.
We know that there's a lot of activity that's going on, particularly out in the field, you know, from various field locations, both within DPW and DOT, headquarters doesn't always have visibility into what's going on out there, and, you know, sometimes, we try to work with other entities and use sophisticated investigative techniques to get at that, but what I try to emphasize with my people is see and be seen, particularly the ones that have responsibility for a particular agency, we have one agent dedicated to DPW, one to DOT, get out there on the ground where the rubber meets the road, you know, let people see you, put up the anti-fraud posters, let people know that we are touchable, you know, and, you know, we are nice and talk to people, and we're not going to hurt you, and try to encourage, you know, folks to come forward with things that they are aware about.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, how are you? My apologies for having to leave out of the room for a moment, but I did have a question. It's good to see the work that your office is doing is yielding positive results for the city, and I'm glad to hear you say that there has been a concerted effort to recruit staff that are Baltimore City residents, that really is important to us. But I'd like to know, does your office have the authority to assign an agent to the Baltimore City Public School System, or does the status as a state agency prevent this? I know there's city agency too, but, you know, we have state statutes that intercede on our authority.
So, in the past, our office has tried to conduct investigations within agencies such as the Liquor Board, now that's changed with the new legislation, you know, last year, the courts, the schools, okay, the state agencies, that although they, the hiring and firing and everything is conducted by the state, they get a lot of city money. And, you know, we believe certainly from the perspective of contracting, there's a lot of opportunities there for fraud, and we certainly should have the ability to come in, we like to follow the money, if it's city money, we've got jurisdiction. You know, in the past, we've gotten some pushback because they claim that they're state, you know, and not city, and are not subject to our jurisdiction. Certainly, to look at the schools, we would certainly need a ramp up in resources to be able to address that, whether that would be in the form of agents that are funded by and dedicated to, you know, the school system. We understand that there's a small investigative element within the school system that's under their law department, we have in the past referred, we have a control file of if we get a complaint about a school contract or something, we will refer it over to them, but we haven't tracked, you know, the results and what happens, but we certainly believe that we, it's city-funded, we should be able to look at the money.
What impediments do you, what are the greatest impediments you find in being able to do that? And the reason I bring this up, we've made some good strides with the school system, but there continues to be issues that I think the inspector general's office going into would begin to shed some light on increased accountability and transparency within that agency.
Right.
So, how can we help your office have access into investigating the school system?
So, probably right on point, this past year, we issued an evaluation report, and I have here with me our evaluations manager, Kevin Carson, and looking at the stewardship of the public art that's displayed at a lot of the schools, and there's this 1% for art ordinance, and it buys a lot of the sculpture and paintings and things, and it had been discovered that over the years, very many pieces of art had disappeared because of a lack of accountability. Obviously, as a key part of that, we needed to get cooperation from the school system, and certainly, when we went out to individual schools and interviewed administrators, principals, and so on, we got cooperation on that end. It was a little more difficult when we were trying to interact with upper management, whether because that was just a lack of familiarity with our office, we did in fact make that happen at the end of the day, but there was, it took a lot more time than was certainly necessary. Whether it would require a letter from the council, to the commissioner of schools, urging the embracing of the OIG, and incorporating us into investigative matters?
We can certainly introduce a piece of legislation suggesting that that should be the case and invite the school system in, and they are coming in on Monday, Monday after next, for their budget hearing, and it is certainly something that we can bring up, but I do believe it is one of those areas where the city spends a significant portion of general funds, that we ought to be able to have greater assurance of how those funds are being spent, just as we're able to begin to get more of that from other agencies. Council President, you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, what I wanted to say is, if the school system is picking and choosing when they're state agency, then we need to pick and choose when we're paying their legal liability, because they come through our law department, and we pay their claims, I think they pay us back some kind of way, but they can't have it both ways, you know, and for, I know for a fact that I read where the Maryland State Board of Schools found that they had misappropriated or misspent federal dollars, so if they did that with federal dollars, what are they doing with foul dollars? You know, I mean, they were spending it on trips and buying lingerie, and, I mean, I read that article, it was about a year or two ago, you know, so, we're going to ask that the school system do the same thing that our police department is doing, DOT, Public Works, they need to make sure that they fund an inspector, one of your people in their system to root out fraud and make the citizens more comfortable that their dollars are spent appropriately, you know, I mean, these are things that any agency would want to make sure that there's accountability, and the school system, like $52 million one time, that the city had to front for them because their budget was short, remember that, $52 million? And we don't know whatever happened to, where that $52 million went, why was it a $52 million deficit, those are the kind of things, so, we get held accountable as council people for the school system, and we have no authority. I get sick and tired of people coming down here during the budget time, holding us accountable for an agency that claims they're state agency when they want to, and then claim they're city agency when they want to, so they can't have it both ways.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Scott.
Madam Chair, actually, the President and Councilman Mosby asked the questions that I were going to ask.
Very good, Councilman Inspector.
I already did mine, and I've been told I talked too long.
Very good. There being no further questions, we're going to take a brief recess, and we will resume at 2:00, and we will resume at 2:00 PM, thank you.
Am I excused, Madam Chair?
Yes, you are, thank you so much for your service in Baltimore.
27th of July for Port Covington?
Say again?
For Port Covington?
Yes.
20th, oh, I won't-
Because, you know, I think this is going to be one of those where-
Yeah, I'm sure they will. Are you doing work sessions, or are you doing here, how's that, how are you breaking it down?
What'd you say, dear?
Are you doing work sessions, or are you having sessions?
We'll give it out.
We're going to have a session, but we'll have at least two of them.
Oh, that's her, that's her, I'm on another community, how you doing?
I'm away till August the 13th.
I'll check, you may miss both of them, because Jack wants me to try to get them back.
There's an August meeting, on the, winter or August meeting, Jan, City Council, we have-
We have one meeting in August.
I think it's 15th or 16th.
You may be right, I'm not sure.
I don't know when the August meeting is.
Here, between the July and the August meeting, I'm here.
Okay, okay, I'll let you know as soon as possible. Yeah, there is, there is.
Okay. If you said schedule them out, is there a schedule? But look at the context of them, I said, is he going to put this one first, like city contractors posting and reporting requirements?
What's the easements, the easements are probably the easiest, sale of property, knock out the property bills, they're the easiest.
F bill, Arts Commission tax credit, or Entertainment District, and then Baltimore meeting. Something you lost today, that's why I wanted to look.
Does he want it? What'd you say?
Oh, they can stuff one here, let me move this, just lift it up. Are those yours, are they not yours? Want me to get rid of them? Want me to get rid of them? They not yours? Oh, let me see, they were in there.
Are these swimming classes?
I can't tell, but they look nice.
There you go.
No, I probably can't use them, I wear, oh, God, you want me to just toss them? Because they evidently been there.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Helen Holton from the 8th District, Chair of the Budget Appropriations Committee, and we are resuming our budget hearings on City Council Bill 16665, 663. Okay, somewhere in that ballpark. Joined this afternoon, to my left, your right, Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, member of the committee. Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District, member of the committee.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Rebecca Tab, General Counsel to the City Council. To my right, your left, Mr. Eric Nipper. DePaul Nipper. I love that name. Who is staffing our committee at the moment. Councilman Nick Mosby from the 7th District. Councilman Rochelle Ricky Spector from the 5th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam State's Attorney, thank you for coming. We'll have you begin with introducing the staff that you brought with you today, taking us through your overview and your presentation. We won't, we will hold all questions until you have gotten through your entire presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of Budget and Appropriations Committee. Thank you for having me this afternoon. The role and the priority of the Office of the State's Attorney for Baltimore City is to prosecute every criminal case in the city, which is central to any strategy to increase public safety. As a chief prosecutor for this city, I have pledged to all of you and to your constituents to increase transparency and to do all that I can to restore the trust between law enforcement and our communities. Under my administration, I've been tasked, and I've tasked each of my prosecutors to pursue justice over convictions. In consideration of several key factors, the mayor's office has not reduced our budget for fiscal year 2017, and these factors include the following, Madam Chair. One, the recent spike in violent crime. Two, the need for additional funding to implement, fully implement, the body-worn camera program, which accounts for a third of our general fund increase. And last but certainly not least, considering the fact that the state legislator on two occasions has made it abundantly clear that they must see a demonstrated commitment from the city to invest in the long-term success of the State's Attorney's Office, there is an unintended consequence of risking the loss of critical state grant funding if our general fund budget is cut. For these same reasons, I implore you to pass our budget as proposed. I'm grateful for the support as my prosecutors continue to work tirelessly with the police and other public safety partners to combat the current crime increase. Following my remarks, my Chief of Administration for Operations, Stuart Beckham, who's to my right, will dive into the specifics of the proposed fiscal year 2017 budget, but I'd like to use my time this morning to provide you with a top-level view of how we have prioritized spending in my office to more effectively prosecute perpetrators of senseless crimes, better serve victims and witnesses, and run a more efficient and effective administrative operation. Our largest spending increase, as you all can see, in fiscal year 2017 is attributed to the full implementation of the city's body-worn camera program. We are excited to embark on this new project in the interest of transparency. Together with the police, we will build better criminal cases, resolve cases more efficiently, and help restore trust within the criminal justice system, on both behalf of the constituents as well as the police. However, as you also know, there is a significant upfront investment necessary to make this program a success. As many of you are aware, from a prosecution standpoint, every attorney in my office must meet discovery obligations stemming from the body camera footage and ensure the protection of victims and witnesses through cutting-edge redaction protocols. Therefore, my office will employ six dedicated attorneys, eight law clerks, and four paralegals to fully support the proposed program at a total cost of between $1.4 and $1.5 million. Please note that in addition to the staffing of an entire new unit, this figure accounts for the technological upgrades in the equipment expenditures that our information systems unit will need to fully operate the program. The chief of my information systems unit is here, Darren O'Brien, also to my right. Now, I'd like to review the prosecution of criminals across Baltimore City. As I've previously indicated time and time again, the State's Attorney, as State's Attorney, my top priorities are, have been, to target violent repeat offenders, build public trust in law enforcement, and running a transparent and accountable administration. Last year, our office prosecuted almost 50,000 cases. Nearly 14,000 of those were felony cases in circuit court. My prosecutors handle the largest criminal caseloads in the state, and on average, my felony unit handles more than 3,000 drug and handgun cases and 1,200 violent felonies each and every year. The caseload for my assistant State's Attorneys and my homicide unit increased last year with the increase in homicides. It increased by nearly 20% from the year before, which means that on average, each of my homicide prosecutors is currently handling, on average, 54 active cases at either investigation or trial phase. According to the Bureau of Justice Assistance, the recommended caseload for homicide prosecutors nationwide is 20 homicides, 20 homicide cases per year, meaning that my homicide prosecutors are carrying more than double the recommended number of active cases. Despite these challenges, our homicide units still managed to secure convictions in 126 of the 159 closed cases in 2015, which is an almost 80% conviction rate, and I'm extremely proud of them for that. Violent repeat offenders are our top priority, which is why under my leadership, we've created a Criminal Strategies Unit, which is a data intelligence division that coordinates with the police department and other public safety partners utilizing technology, data analysis, and intelligence gathering to identify trends in crime, focus in on the offenders driving the crime, and target those offenders through enforcement. Since its inception, and you all are all well aware, we've been in office for 18 months, this unit has established an arrest alert system that notifies prosecutors within one hour when a violent repeat offender is arrested in the city, enabling us to make more compelling arguments to detain these individuals pre-trial. Additionally, the unit is actively reviewing gun cases that do not result in a conviction to identify offenders that should be added to the arrest alert system, as well as the participation in BPD's newly convened war room effort. When it comes to gun offenders, we take these offenses seriously and work with the Baltimore Police to identify and prosecute gun offenders who violate the terms of their probation and/or fail to register for the gun offender registry. My newly restructured conviction integrity unit aggressively enforces all violations of probation, including gun crimes, and a member of the conviction integrity team attends every violation of probation hearing in circuit court to ensure my office's recommendation is being heard. My conviction integrity prosecutors also work closely with the Baltimore Police Department to monitor compliance with gun offender registration requirements. When a gun offender fails to register or provides inaccurate or incomplete registration information, the Baltimore Police requests warrants for their arrest. My conviction integrity unit reviews and approves each of these warrants. Furthermore, the gun offender registry is also utilized by our office as a monitoring tool, and we use it to cross-reference intelligence through other sources to identify and target these individuals. Recognizing that our role as prosecutors isn't exclusive to the courtroom, with the creation of a Policy and Legislative Affairs Division, we've been able to make headway, not only in the courtroom, but also in Annapolis. This past legislative session, and my Deputy Director for Policy and Legislative Affairs is here as well, where are you, Lisa? Lisa Smith. This past legislative session, my office fought for several bills to hold violent offenders accountable and ensure justice for victims, including two bills which were introduced by the Baltimore Police Department, one of which would have expanded the state's right to appeal to include cases in which an individual is prohibited from possessing a firearm, and another would have established a mandatory minimum of one year for possession of a handgun with penalties increasing for each offense. Additionally, we successfully championed for enhanced penalties for repeat drunk drivers who injure or kill people. This piece of legislation will help to bring justice to families of victims like Thomas Palermo, who was killed by Bishop Heather Cook in North Baltimore. We also successfully fought to increase the maximum penalty for second-degree murder from 30 to 40 years. And while unsuccessful, we introduced and lobbied for the third year in a row, critical legislation that would bring our state's sexual assault laws closer to federal rules. This year, it passed the Senate unanimously, marking the legislation's most significant progress to date, and I would also like to thank the City Council for unanimous support in passing a resolution in support of this bill. Although it didn't pass this year, we will continue to work with stakeholders throughout the summit to increase the legislation's future passage. Again, I thank each and every one of you for this important attempt to eliminate rape culture, especially in Baltimore City. In Baltimore City, victim witness services are paramount, and you'll see a slide which depicts what we're doing in this division. Victim witness services are paramount to any successful prosecution strategy. We are the home of the stop-snitching culture, and I recognize the tremendous amount of work that we all need to do to break down these barriers of distrust that exist between community and law enforcement. Therefore, in the past year, we've expanded victim witness services within the State's Attorney's Office. I've challenged my staff to provide world-class services and support to all of Baltimore's victims and witnesses of crime. We found that prior to my administration, the families of homicide victims were not being notified until after a suspect was found and charged in a case. Therefore, months would go by without any communication from the State's Attorney's Office and no clear understanding by the family of the overall criminal justice process. Shortly after I took office, we made this change. Now, every single one of our homicide cases has been assigned to a trained victim witness advocate to assist the victim's family through the duration of the criminal process, and we offer free lifetime counseling from licensed therapists to those directly impacted by homicide through our Family Bereavement Center. The Family Bereavement Center served over 500 homicides of survivors last year, with victim witness services that not only helped to restore life balance to those who are experiencing extreme feelings of grief, despair, or anger after losing a loved one to violence, but the services that are provided also increase the likelihood of cooperation by witnesses and family members of homicide survivors, which is essential to, again, getting the most dangerous individuals and offenders off of our streets. Within the expansion of our victim witness unit, last year, our staff facilitated the relocation of over 96 families into safe housing and assisted 81 victims with emergency needs following a crime. Our community liaisons, which some are represented in today, Kenji Scott, positions restored thanks to you all, thanks to the support of each and every one of you. These community liaisons were tasked with helping prosecutors to identify and contact victims and witnesses of crime, as well as to assist community groups with victim impact statements, which are extremely critical to each and every one of your constituents. Again, each of these community liaison roles have been vital to the restoration of trust among our communities and law enforcement, and I would again like to thank each and every one of you for your support with those positions. Last but certainly not least, I'd also like to touch upon our efforts to not only serve city youth, our children, youth in the prevention of violence, but to take a holistic approach to the prosecution of crime in a city where 24% of Baltimore's population is living in poverty and 35% of children are living below poverty. Recognizing the need to holistically address the systemic and economic causes of crime, under my leadership, we've created a Crime Control and Prevention Division, which does just that. Last year, shortly after and following the unrest, we implemented a program called Aim to Be More, an alternative to incarceration program modeled after nationally-established best practices in law enforcement, which is dedicated to putting the lives of first-time nonviolent felony drug offenders back on track, where upon successful completion of the program, they are given a job and an opportunity to do more with their lives. I'm proud to report that today, 54 men and women are participating in Aim to Be More. These defendants are not in jail and instead have completed a combined 2,200 community service hours. 32 defendants, mostly young people, have graduated from job training courses, and more than half of them already have jobs. One defendant, for example, was homeless when he pled into the Aim to Be More program. He's now working full-time in a construction job and part-time in the service industry. Another defendant volunteered to help domestic violence survivors with makeup application and is now working at MAC Cosmetics instead of selling drugs or serving time in city jail. I am of the opinion that this program and the larger reform process underway within our criminal justice system will help to permanently reduce crime in our city, which is why we implemented the Crime Control and Prevention Division. Because we recognize the need to get to our young people before they actually get to the criminal justice system, we've implemented two other initiatives through our Crime Control and Prevention Division. Great Expectations and Junior State's Attorney Program, where we are able to launch these programs last year using, we had to use existing resources, as well as the kindness of donors who have assisted us, including President Jack Young. We were able to show that Junior State's Attorney Program exposed these rising 8th graders to careers in the criminal justice field. We aim to build the faith in the criminal justice system while empowering our young people to be involved in the profession and not the system. The Junior State's Attorney Program meets in the summertime, when we often hear of young people not having very much to do. They learn and they start from the beginning of a case all the way to the end of a case, and they go from the 911 call center all the way to federal district circuit court, and at the culmination of that six weeks, they do a mock trial competition at the University of Baltimore School of Law, where they can then see themselves as prosecutors and defense attorneys and judges. This program provides a safe place and experience life-changing activities and benefit, it benefits our youth through mentorship. Great Expectations is a 10-month initiative that introduces 4th graders in Baltimore City public schools to, again, the careers in the criminal justice system. Currently, this program is only offered to 4th graders and students at the Franklin Square Elementary, but I also would like you all to note that we launched that program in the height of the unrest just last year, when we were focusing on West Baltimore. As you can see, we've had a very busy 18 months under my administration, and although we are comparatively small agency when compared to others, we're tasked with an enormous amount of responsibility. I can tell you that 90% of our budget is comprised of personnel costs. If we see cuts, we'll have to reduce staffing at a time when crime rate and the record caseloads are already a challenge. As you know, due to the volume and the complexities in our city, there's no other operation like ours in the state of Maryland. Thank you for all that you all do and for supporting our efforts to fairly deliver justice to the citizens of Baltimore on a daily basis. Unless you have any questions for me, I will now turn things over to Mr. Beckham for a more detailed presentation of our fiscal year 2017 budget. Additionally, Darren O'Brien, Chief of our Information Services, Sandra Goldfarb, Chief of our Evidence Review Unit, are available to explain the progress we've made in implementing the body-worn camera program, and Charles Blomquist, Chief of my Criminal Strategies Unit, is also here to explain some of the successes within the unit. Thank you.
Thank you. And colleagues, what we will do is we'll let them go through the financial piece, since this is the budget hearing, before we entertain questions. I'd also like to announce that we've been joined by Councilman Carl Stokes from the 12th District, Council Vice President Ed Reisinger from the 10th District, Member of the Committee, Vice Chair Councilman Jim Craft from the 1st District, and Council President C. Bernard Jack Young. Thank you. Mr. Beckham.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Council President, members of the council. I am gonna walk you through the slide deck that we prepared for this presentation, and I will also be available to answer any financial or fiscal questions that you have. We set this slide deck up based on the three services that we have at the State's Attorney's Office. Those three services are prosecution of criminals, administration, and victim witness services. Prosecution of criminals, as you see under the service description, is the service that houses our litigators, both in the district court, the circuit court, our charging function, juvenile, and essentially that's it. Last year, we had the deli seer, as the State's Attorney mentioned, with 345 homicides. And they compared that record to 353 in 1993, when the city had more than 100,000 residents. Our increase in crime had a direct and immediate impact on our agency. We prosecuted over 40,000 cases, including 34,000 in district court and almost 14,000 in the circuit court. We also prosecuted collateral matters and post-conviction matters, petitions for expungement, which amounted to about 10,000. And the increased caseload obviously had an impact on our prosecutors, because their individual caseloads went up. But notwithstanding, our conviction rate went close to 80% over 2014, where it was 75%. We are currently staffed with 212 sworn assistant state's attorneys and 166 support staff, which includes social workers, victim advocates, paralegals, law clerks, and administrative In 2016, the State's Attorney mentioned the four ASAs, which will be discussed, if you wish, on the Crime Strategies Unit. The salary cost was 253,000, and there was additional cost, obviously, for the fringe or other personnel costs for that unit. Our chief, our division chief, Mr. Blomquist, can certainly give you more explanation on that program, but it's an intelligence-driven program focusing on data analysis. We also had two positions... We also had two positions created in our budget based on a federal grant we got called Smart Prosecution. It basically works out of our charging unit, and it's evaluating data and looking at the population that it serves to make decisions on bail review, on judgments for bail review. And as the State's Attorney mentioned, we launched a program called Aim to Be More. We also had our Junior State's Attorney's Program and the Great Expectations Program, but as you see, Aim to Be More was focused on an alternative to incarceration for nonviolent offenders, first-time felony drug offenders. We've had success with the graduation of those participants. Turning your attention to Victim Witness Services, as the State's Attorney mentioned, this involves our victim advocates, which reach out to the families and survivors of crime. It also includes folks who are managing these community-based outreach programs that the State's Attorney has created. In FY216, there was a reorganization that was used to streamline our communication issues between the prosecutors and the victim advocates, and they're now working together, working with the families and meeting with them in a timely manner to provide services, counseling, and assistance. We're working with the Housing Authority as well in our relocation program for victims and witnesses of violent crime who need to be relocated for their safe being. Our Victim Witness Unit also has our Family Bereavement Center, which is the only one in the state, and we provide grief counseling with our full-time staff to all of the victims and witnesses that come through the State's Attorney's Office. And we do provide that counseling well beyond the period of the trial and related events. Also in Victim Witness Services, we received 279,000. Again, that is the personnel cost, direct personnel salary cost. It does not include the other personnel costs, but it allowed us to hire the six community liaisons, which is supporting the efforts that the State's Attorney is doing out in the community insofar as meeting with community groups, victim witnesses, advocates, and the We reorganized that unit so that we could, as I mentioned before, reach out to people and talk to them as to whether they have information that would provide the assistance of the case in terms of who they might be able to identify or have us talk to, which will support developing our caseload. In the Administration Service, the major budget item, obviously, is the Body Worn Camera Unit. In our pilot project, we hired two contractual assistant state's attorneys and four law clerks to support the pilot program, which was based on about 155 Baltimore Police Department officers wearing the cameras. Once the decision was made to fully implement the Body Worn Camera Program, it was incumbent upon us and the city as well to build up our system, our information system system, at a cost of $1 million. That buildup was done in FY16 in the current fiscal year, and in 17, we're going to increase the number of staff, as the State's Attorney mentioned, to include six assistant state's attorneys, eight law clerks, four paralegals, and we also have some operations and maintenance costs in terms of licensing fees, upgrades, and the like to support the system. And right now, the projected cost is about 132,000 for that. The Baltimore Police Department provided figures for us to do the development of our program, and they're averaging 2,300 on-view arrests per month. Assuming that there are at least two officers present during an arrest, each having video footage of anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes per arrest, we used that number to develop the amount of footage for approximately 4,600 pieces of footage and the time it would take for our staff to review that footage. And that's how we developed our number of additional personnel to support this program. Finally, I'd like to point out that in FY2017, we now must fully support our office lease at 120 East Baltimore Street. In the prior years, that lease was supported in part by a grant that we got from the state, but that grant was reduced, so now it's a full general fund responsibility. So 500,000 was added to our budget, plus a little bit more to deal with the increased escalation of the lease. That's an overview, and pending your questions, that's my report.
Very good. Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Um, wait a minute. One was, wait a minute. Oh, under Victim and Witness Services and the grief counseling, and you have staff, I'm wondering, do you all collaborate in any way with Roberta's House that works primarily with students in the school system around grief? And I know that's their sole mission, and if you're doing grief counseling, you know, not that our youth can't get enough of that, but are you coordinated in any way with what they're doing? I know they've been doing it for a number of years and have some really innovative ways, and I know the State's Attorney's Office has not been doing it that long. I think it probably really, in terms of young people, we have a lot of youth violence, and I think that anything that supports our youth in terms of having healthy and productive lives, and I think, given the incidences we're facing in the city, that's an area where you can't have too much, but it's good to have it coordinated, because everyone has limited dollars, and to the extent it's coordinated, you can get more accomplished. Do you all have any type of, and there may be other programs out there, but that's one I know of that's specifically tied to the school system providing...
So, yes, we do coordinate with Roberta's House, and I'm going to introduce you to my deputy for External Affairs.
Okay.
My chief deputy for External Affairs, and she's responsible for our Victim Witness Unit. We've actually applied for several grants around Victim Witness Services, and I'll let her explain.
Okay.
Go in more detail.
Good afternoon. I'm Tammy Brown. I'm the Chief of External Affairs for the State's Attorney's Office, and Victim Witness does fall under my unit, and we work extremely closely with Roberta's House. In fact, a number of my staff volunteer there and are cross-trained, so they are in close coordination with them. What distinguishes us is we do individual services, so why we don't do the group services like they do? We're very familiar with what they offer, and we're trying not to duplicate, but what we do do for families, particularly the youth, is when they come in, we survey the household, we talk to each of the family members individually, and particularly, you know, moms that are heavily affected, and we ask them if they have youth that are in need of services, and we do provide individual counseling for kids to come into our office.
Okay. I mean, I just think that when you look at that, and I'm glad we don't need duplication of effort, but where we can coordinate, where you may give them individual, but I do know there are dynamics in group counseling, like a Roberta's House, that can strengthen whatever they may be getting individually.
Yeah, absolutely. And we also have been looking for any grant opportunities that we can sort of combine forces. I mean, what we find, too, is that a lot of times, families, just because we're related to the system, aren't as apt to come to us initially, so we do leverage Roberta's House for those particular families, if they're not interested or they're nervous or apprehensive, because, you know, they do associate us with law enforcement, and sometimes that's a barrier. So, we've been working with them, and anytime we come across that, we do work closely with them so they can help those families, because ultimately, I mean, that's our goal, to make sure that all the families in the city are served.
Very good. Thank you. Now, my next question is around administration, and it's focused around body worn cameras. And I understand you had four contractual law clerks during the pilot. Well, now that we're implementing, my question is, and it's on Slide 6, now, I'm no attorney, and I just want to understand, so you're looking at eight law clerks and four paralegals, and, you know, just so I'm clear, the difference between a law clerk and a paralegal?
Okay. A law clerk is obviously someone that has gone to law school, is either in law school or is a recent graduate, and has had legal training in the law and the like. A paralegal is someone who is well-versed in the administration of legal documents and what have you.
And not necessarily gone to law school.
It probably has not gone to law school.
Okay.
That's correct.
Oh, certification, okay. I just was, okay, that makes sense. That's all I have at the, oh, wait a minute. So, with the police department in this coordination of body worn cameras, because I understand it's the police department, it's the State's Attorney's Office, do we still have a coordinated criminal justice counsel, or what was it called, you know?
Criminal Justice.
Coordinated Criminal Justice Counsel? How is that working? Because it was, I know it was the law, police department, State's Attorney's Office, there was one other major agency. I know, but there were three major ones that created it. How is that playing?
The Bureau of Purchases was involved as well in the structure of getting the, of letting out the bids for the pilot project and also for the final selection.
On the court system.
Yeah. And I have Darren O'Brien here, who is the MIS Chief for the State's Attorney's Office, and he can probably speak to some of the efforts that, or discussions that occurred before the Criminal Justice Coordinating Technology Subcommittee.
I mean, I've sat in on a couple of those meetings, but I think it's important to make sure there's good coordination there, and where all the fund, you know, and Mr. Klein, maybe this is a question for you, in terms of citywide, what we're looking at, because each of these agencies has an important part to play. I just believe body worn cameras is an important program for Baltimore City, and to make sure that each of these agencies are adequately funded to do their part, because it's like a three-legged stool. If one leg doesn't have the resources that they need, we could miss the opportunity to increase prosecutions that result in convictions.
So?
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Darren O'Brien. Yes, I'm the Chair of the Coordinating Counsel, or Criminal Justice Coordinating Counsel IT Committee, and we meet bimonthly and monthly at times.
We need you to talk right into the microphone, because these sessions are being recorded, though they're not running live.
All right, there you go. Okay, so, good afternoon, Darren O'Brien. I'm the Chair for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Counsel IT Committee, and we meet monthly and bimonthly at points, but now we are meeting monthly just to cover the IT topics related to body worn camera. And individuals represented actually branch outside of Baltimore City as well, so we have BPD represented by Andrew Chaffee, myself, the Public Defender's Office, and the bench. So, body worn camera really covers every individual, every portion of the criminal justice system in Baltimore City. So, we are addressing that bi-monthly, and we discuss specifically the needs as far as it relates to infrastructure and individuals or manpower hours or person power hours related to processing these, the body worn camera footage. So, there is a great coordination within the city criminal justice agencies at the current time.
And that's important. I don't want to see anything interfere with, you know, you only get one chance to come out of the chute and to come correct, and we need to do that correctly as we go live beyond the pilot. Thank you. My last question is having to do with the office space of the State's Attorney's Office. That did not happen on your watch, Madam State's Attorney, but nonetheless, it was a painful pill to swallow, and your last bullet has to do with the $500,000 in direct support, and I don't know if you have the answer or if Mr. Klein has the answer. Where are we on that office lease of the State's Attorney's Office? And who's paying that? And are we still locked into that lease for an extended amount of time, which was not a wise business decision when it was done, but it was done nonetheless because we in this council don't have the ability to impact these decisions? I don't know who's best equipped to answer the question, but...
I can speak a little to the lease, obviously. It's about $1.2 million in the current year, and the city is now assuming full responsibility in the general fund to cover the lease. It's about five years in, it's a 10-year lease, and it has a minor escalation every other year during the term of the lease.
So, at five years in, is the State's Attorney's Office beginning to look for space that is more affordable? I mean, it just begs the question, oh, the State's Attorney's Office is in this luxurious office space while the city is grappling with funding, and I'd much rather see funding be afforded towards law enforcement, you know, prosecution than lofty office space.
Well, unfortunately, Madam Chair, again, this did not happen under my administration, and we kind of had to walk into it.
Right, and then five years left, right.
But I can tell you that within the first 100 days of my administration, that's something that we looked at. We carefully assessed, we went and we looked to see and compare office spaces in and around the courthouse, because we have to be in close proximity because of our victims and witnesses and the concern that we have for them. So, Stuart can talk to you about the square footage. I can tell you that the deal that was made was the best deal when you make a comparison of where we are today. Unfortunately, when they left the courthouse and there was a decision made to leave the courthouse, the courthouse is no longer available. It's occupied. Those spaces within the courthouse are occupied, and the square footage, yes, it's occupied. There's no, there's no space for us at this point. And then, when we look at the square footage in comparison to other buildings in and around the courthouse, we're not going to get the deal that we have right now presently in the 120 East Baltimore. But that was an assessment that was made, and it was made very early on.
And so, Mr. Klein, what I would say is we're halfway through that process. Baltimore City owns quite a bit of real estate in the city. The courthouse, which is still in need of dire renovation, I would hope that we are looking strategically, like we do on other things, 10-year plans and the whatnot, as to space in close proximity. You know, public opinion goes a long way in assessing the viability of agencies and where we reside, so I'd hope that's on the plan as one of the things in transition that we put on the radar screen that says we're doing the best we can with the few dollars we have, because in my mind, you know, $1.2 million a year, when we could, that type of money spent to renovate space or something else that says, probably not the same amount of money, but to take the excess and putting it more into resources for prosecution, whether it's more prosecutors, I mean, I don't know what, but I hope that we're looking to, in my mind, I would say, place more value on lives and quality of life than address. Thank you. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like you were just talking in time and sounding like myself from a few years ago when I said that we should not give Mr. Burns the money for rent, because we would regret it, if the three of us, Councilmen Mosley, if just us, just us three. And thank you, Madam State's Attorney, for looking into it. We know it was not, was not your doing. Madam State's Attorney, I want to talk just really quickly about something in general. I know that it's something that we all get frustrated with, but I want to figure out if there's a way for us to better help your office. We often know that your office and the police often go, and we have violent repeat offenders who are caught in one instance in my district, literally, in the act of robbing someone by the police, and unfortunately, despite the efforts of your office and the police, we have some members of the bench that refuse to violate their probation. How can we better help you and the police keep these people where they belong, because oftentimes, they end up either later, weeks later, days later, the perpetrator or victim of violent crime? How frustrated with you with that process? What can we do to help you continue to do the great work that you guys are doing? And I also want to thank you for reconnecting your office with us and the community, is something that did not happen with your predecessor. So, how can we help you with that?
I think, Councilman, thank you for your question. I think doing what you're doing. I agree with the Commissioner that a level of scrutiny, it doesn't just fall on the police department, it doesn't just fall on prosecutors. I think that there are different varying roles that each of us play when we target these individuals, and then when we're able to successfully get a conviction against these individuals and the community comes forward so that we can get these convictions. I'm not going to say that it's, you know, completely and all on the bench, but I think holding these public forums and a level of scrutiny, it's just not the police, it's just not my office. It's a number of factors that play into why these individuals are back out on our streets. But in any event, I think you're doing just what you need to do.
Thank you. And just very quickly, and actually, this is probably mainly for Mr. Klein, Mr. Klein, as we move further into the future... Mr. Klein, as we move further into the future with body cameras, are we prepared to allot more resources to the state's attorney's office to deal with this? Because from my experience, as we go on, the costs may rise, and we sometimes in the city like to try to keep things minimal, when the responsibility and actual cost should be raising.
Councilman, we'll certainly be monitoring the resource needs for the body cameras as we go forward. Right now, everything is based on estimates, and we'll start to see actuals, and as we do, we will budget accordingly.
Thank you.
And I believe there was a question, was there a question about the body cameras, Councilman Rising?
Yes, process.
Okay. My chief for evidence review is also here. She can talk more to it. Sandra Gofar.
Good afternoon.
So the process with the cameras specifically, right now, the police have implemented, thanks. They've implemented the first 80 cameras, and we've attended the training, and we've had meetings with, we've been part of the meetings with the police department that meets weekly regarding the program. We receive from the police department all video that is related to an arrest or a citation, as in traffic. When we get the videos, our office has to process the videos. Think of it as a video that has a great deal of information, and not all of it may be related to the specific crime. For example, the officers are encouraged to video more than less, that's always more helpful. The first 10 minutes of a video perhaps is the officer sitting in his car, and then events happen, and then the last 10 minutes are they're waiting for the pickup van, and then something happens. There's a great gap of time. That becomes one thing that we do, my unit does, which is mark videos, so that it makes it easier for the assigned assay to know where to look, a bit of a cheat sheet, if you will. We also have a requirement to do redactions. In videos, you could have victims giving personal information that defense is not entitled to. You could have images of juveniles, which come up quite often. If video is taken in a hospital, officers may inadvertently take videos of patients, et cetera. So redaction becomes another part of it. Also, with any NPIA requests, although the police department is going to be handling those, they will forward any film footage to us first, to see if anything needs to be redacted before it is submitted to the public. What we've, what we've seen in our pilot program, which was only a period from October 26th to December 18th, and so, the officers didn't have extensive training, and there were limited number of films that came over as cases. But what we've already seen is, we had a very large drug case. In fact, it was a kilo of heroin, 444, I think, grams of cocaine, and many pounds of marijuana. And it was because there was extensive video, and it was the statements of the defendant that led to a plea deal in the case. What we find is that defendants like to talk, they like to talk a lot. And things they may say, which a jury would not believe, perhaps a judge may not believe, if you said it, if you read it on a piece of paper, when you see it on video, it becomes self-evident. We've had another case, not a large drug case, an issue where there was an assault, and the person clearly needed some mental health treatment. Their defense attorney doing their job, trying to get them to get a lesser type of arrangement. Once they realized they had a video of the person and how she had behaved, they immediately agreed to what the state had been proposing. We see it a lot as traffic, all the time. You know, someone's being pulled over, you know, "Do you know why you're being pulled over?" "Yes, I ran the red light." So we see it from the simple to the extreme. Was there a specific, okay, great, thank you.
Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam State's Attorney. Thank you for everything that your office is doing. Interactions with government relations, or whatever you call it, legislative services with Lisa Smith has been nothing short of fantastic. I wanted to talk about service number 786, victim and witness services, for a moment. One of the things that we heard from BPD a couple nights ago was the need to increase the money available for rewards for witnesses to crimes. I just wanted to know how the state's attorney's office plays into that whole discussion and those efforts, so if you could shed a little light on what's happening there.
Ms. Brown, Tammy Brown will address that question for you.
So, I mean, while, you know, because it, we don't directly ask for funding, because it could be a conflict related to our office, obviously, but we do work hand in glove with BPD and Metro Crime Stoppers, and any community outreach or information that they're trying to put out to the community to find suspects, or get the word out that there are rewards for people willing to come forward. But because we are the state's attorney's office, it would be a conflict for us to directly solicit funding for their particular efforts.
So would you, would you be able to say if it's your office's opinion that there needs to be more money?
Absolutely. I mean, anything we can do to encourage victims and witnesses to come forward, and I don't think it's even just the monetary amount, as much as it is just showing that we value. And also, you know, a lot of times, that money is valuable to those individuals, that they be able to use it for safety reasons, for relocation, and while we offer those services for our victims and witnesses, again, a lot of times, they don't want to come forward and share it directly with us, but may be willing to do it to a third party like Metro Crime Stoppers.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Uh, Council President Young.
Thank you. Who authorized the release of the videos from the body cameras?
Yeah.
Yeah, mhm. Commissioner Davis said he fired seven officers, who were, said he fired seven officers as it relates to that.
So, to understand that correctly, you're asking about the Baltimore City Police Department?
Yeah, who authorizes the release of the video from the body camera?
So it depends, so, the officers, when they tag a case, there are specific tags that allow those cases to automatically transfer to our portal on the web. And then, there are other videos, there are two classifications, there are, do you recall what they are? Self-initiated...
So you need to talk into a microphone, those mics are live at the desk.
Other cases, other tags are self-initiated, the officer sees something while they're just patrolling, call for service, you could get, you know, they get the call, we need backup on this, robbery in progress, et cetera.
That commit, so, if it's automatically tagged correctly, they're transferred to us immediately, or within four hours? And those that are not tagged properly are reviewed by an internal body worn, body worn camera committee within the police department, and I believe that's the seven you're speaking of? Those individuals review those that are not tagged properly, and then transfer those to our office, or to our portal?
Okay. Well, he said he fired the seven officers, were any of them looked at for prosecution?
Oh, I see what he's saying. I don't have an answer to that.
Mr. President, I recall the police commissioner saying that. I don't believe that was related to the body camera program.
Was it?
Yeah, I think he was just saying that they've taken a tougher, a tougher line on officers...
I understand that, I understand that, but he said he fired seven officers, I don't know what it was for, but was any of them looked at for prosecution?
Well, the one thing I can say, Mr. President, is that I'm not sure who those, those officers are, but even if they were being investigated, we wouldn't be able to say that.
I understand.
Because it would be a pending matter, and we can't comment on open and pending matters.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spector.
Thank you. Madam State's Attorney, I don't know what you call your community liaisons.
Community liaisons.
Now I know, now I know. Thank you, thank you. I thought that, I thought they had a separate category, but that's exactly where I want to go. They are assigned to each police district, is that correct?
Yes, Councilwoman.
So we are covering, as far as I can tell, citywide, working with the state's attorney and the police department, if we would, in fact, collaborate more with those community police relation councils. And we had the police department in for their budget review as well. If we could get that kind of cooperation from the departments, the agencies, the private sector in those districts that have security, the MTA, the school police, and the community. When I came into the council, when dinosaurs were roaming the earth, every community assigned, every community association, assigned a person to attend that once a month meeting, there was terrific networking, terrific benefit. I don't know if you have specific people that could help, but I did get the commitment from the police commissioner, and to work with us in terms of how we collaborate for each of those police districts, to get this thing going from the ground up. And it's a lot to take on, but it would be invaluable, citywide.
Well, I think, and I agree with you, each of the community liaisons represent nine of the police districts. They are required to attend the CRC meetings within their district. I do believe that, Councilman asked earlier, Councilman Scott asked, what can we do? I think that we have to be able to inform the public. And one of the things that we're doing in the state's attorney's office about this process, and the way that it works, and, you know, how everybody has an integral role in getting these violent repeat offenders off of our streets and making our communities safe. What we're doing in the state's attorney's office, in an attempt to inform the public, is that we have these quarterly community days in court. We open up the doors of the courthouse to the community, we say, this is your courthouse, come in, let's talk about issues of concern. So the first community day in court, we talked about, now it's been five, I can't even remember the first one. What was it? It was sexual assault during Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We talked about re-entry, recidivism, and rebounding after criminal conviction. We've done domestic violence, we've done juvenile reform, and this Saturday, we're having one on homicides. And so, I think it's really important, and what you all can do as the city council is, you know, my community liaisons are going to your constituents and sending out newsletters, and trying to make them aware of what's happening and how they can be a part of the process, but you all also have influence through yourselves and through your staff. So it's a matter of just being informed. And I think more agencies, if they see that collaborative effort, they would be more apt to come out and to understand, once they understand they're stakeholder in this entirety of what's happening in our communities, I think that they would be more apt to be involved.
I agree. Madam State's Attorney, I can tell you that there isn't necessarily as much spreading the news from the, from your people getting, making those kind of reports, because they rely, the public relies more on social media.
I know.
Rumors go halfway around the world before truth gets their boots on.
Right.
If there was a monthly setup, communication entity, like the Community Relation Council meetings, with everybody in that room, and community people reporting back to their neighborhood association, and the private, other private people that will be collaborating with this group, I think better information would get out, and trust and respect would build. I don't know who in your organization would I work with when I go back to the police and my community people, to try to figure out how to make this work citywide.
Well, I can tell you, Tammy Brown is the chief of External Affairs, so my community engagement division, which is what the community liaisons fall under, would fall under her realm. But she could talk to you more, I can put you in contact with Tammy. I also have a deputy director for community engagement for a number of our initiatives with our community liaisons, Ms. Noelle Newman, who leads that unit.
I was going to work with the president's office of neighborhoods, the mayor's office of neighborhoods, Drew Vedder from the police department, and your person, and just get, get this thing loaded up.
We're more than, more than willing.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Kraft.
Good afternoon, Madam State's Attorney.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
I'm on the body cameras also.
Okay.
So, I see the 2,300 on the view arrests, and an average of 4,600 pieces of footage. So, I'm not a great math person, but it's like, that's 98 24-hour days a month. That's over, almost, it's over three months' worth of footage, 24 hours a day, that's generated, to be looked at in 40-hour work weeks, right? So you're adding six state's attorneys, eight law clerks, and four paralegals, and that will be their sole charge, is doing this?
Yes. So even in the pilot program, we had to create a new division, the Evidence Review Unit, and that's essentially what they do. They go over this footage, and they have to do the redactions, they determine what is significant, what is not significant, what is discoverable, what is not discoverable, and that's essentially what the unit does.
They're going to review it in every case, regardless of whether the case moves forward?
I'll have my chief speak to it.
The only cases that we receive are those where there will be an arrest.
Okay.
Arrest or a citation, for those involving traffic.
Okay. Right, so, so if the person is, if the person's just stopped, and there's no arrest, the video is stored?
Correct.
Okay. If they're arrested, then it becomes part of discovery?
Correct.
Right?
What happens is, every, every case has a CC number as it comes in.
Right.
So let's say there's an arrest for an assault, three officers show up, three separate videos.
Right.
Possibly. All three videos are sent to us under the case number, so that we know under this case, we have three videos related to that incident.
Got it? Okay. The reason I ask this question and look at this is because I spent a lot, lot of time, and my committee spent a lot of time doing an investigation of the speed and red light cameras. And one of the things that we found was that it got to the point where they were spending, the police department was spending an average of six seconds reviewing these tickets, because they just didn't have the folks, and, you know, and these were the numbers that we got, it was like six to eight seconds per citation. And naturally, you're not going to get it right, particularly when the people that were doing it were all working on overtime. So these were not your regular, these are people who had already put in eight or 10 hours a day. So, you know, every month on this, just on a, and we're looking at 24-hour days, we're not looking at eight-hour days, right? But every month, when it bases them in eight-hour day, we're falling two months behind, depending on how many people we were applying to do this, and how much time it actually takes them. So my concern is that we have a sufficient number of people to do this properly, so that it doesn't end up as a problem for your office, for the police department, and then...
We're asking for more, right?
Well, not only that, but then it just is, then everybody ends up with mud on their face, you know? And, I mean, it's, it's not just you, but the whole city looks bad. So, you know, I don't want us to be in the same position that we were with the speed and red light cameras, because, you know, we went into the speed and red light cameras, we started out very small, by steps, and the next thing you know, we had the largest speed and red light camera program in North America. And, I mean, literally, and we had no control over it, it was just out of control. We couldn't manage it, we couldn't do anything else. And we're going to have, by the end of 17, by the beginning of 2018, we're going to have 3,000 cameras on the street, right? Or 20 some hu, huh?
1,500.
1,500?
1,500.
1,500? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. 1,500 cameras on the street, that's a lot of footage, you know, to be reviewed all the time. So, I'm just, I just want to make sure that you guys don't end up with a problem that carries over to the police department and also, is there a, do you have some sort of mechanism set up so that on a regular basis, whether it's quarterly, or, you know, semi-annual or whatever, but something, when you're first starting this out, to determine whether you're going to be able to keep up with all of this?
Right now, actually, the videos have started coming in. They started coming in Memorial Day weekend. We don't have the additional staff right now. We are currently current. Just, but just also so you understand, this isn't passive viewing, it's active viewing of a case, so...
Well, that's, and that's why I, that's why I'm making the point.
Yes.
Because it's not, it's not, no.
Sure.
No, I mean, I, that's why I'm, yeah. Because you're saying an average of 30 minutes, but I'm thinking of, if you're getting three cameras, I think that an average of 30 minutes is really an underestimation on what it's going to actually take, a person, when you're looking at, you know, two to three cameras in average, and then trying to make a determination as to, you know, what's discoverable, it's not, you know, what's discoverable, what's not discoverable, you know, what you're going to...
I think you can arguably say that we were, we have gone on the more conservative end of the spectrum, but you'll note that, you know, Vice, Madam Chair, talked about the difference between a paralegal and a law clerk. I think that that is going to assist us as well. We have a number of those where you didn't necessarily need all of those attorneys spending their time and resources looking into them. So, I think, when you look at it that way, we do still have to assess it. I mean, we're not fully implemented, we may, at some point, determine that we need additional positions.
Right.
But at this point, we feel that we've gone through the assessment and the analysis, and that it's sufficient. Darren O'Brien is the person who actually came up with the entire formula, so he can talk more specifics.
Yeah, I'm not trying to give you more money.
No, no, no.
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find a way to take some money.
I understand, I understand.
So, we base this off of a source document from the police department, right? And then, but just to directly answer your question, related to the volume of footage that will have to be reviewed. So, the body worn camera unit, they're sort of the filtering unit. Please understand that every state's attorney in the office...
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Please understand that every state's attorney in the office has access to the footage. So, if the body worn camera unit becomes overwhelmed, the way this works in other jurisdictions nationally, where they don't do as much redaction, I think Baltimore's a unique city in some ways, because we feel that there probably will be, in the beginning, a large number of redaction, right? The privacy issues, exculpatory issues, those kind of things will be redacted. But nationally, what happens is that footage goes directly to all of the ASAs. So, we'll have 400 and, or no, 200...
221.
221 ASAs having access to this footage. So, if the body worn camera unit becomes clogged, so to speak, with redaction, that footage can go directly to the ASAs, and the ASAs review that directly. And you have to understand that every piece of footage that the ASA is going to take into trial, they're going to have to review. So, understand that part of it, is that every individual, including what we did in licensing, is we have licensing for every individual in our, in our agency, not just the prosecutors.
Now, the ASAs, they don't have, they have ability to view it, but they don't have a view to...
They do. What we've done with our lic...
They can't redact, or they cannot do anything, the individual ASAs.
Yes, they can.
Well, then, how do you avoid having a chain of custody problem?
Well, the chain, the chain of custody issue comes, will relate directly to body worn camera unit, not directly to the ASA. If, what I'm saying is...
Once you have, wait a minute, hold it. You have that footage, that footage is evidence.
Absolutely.
You got to account for custody of it.
Absolutely.
Right? So, every time somebody touches it, they are in the chain. And if every person in the chain has the ability to edit it, the more people that have access to it, the more problems you create with your chain of custody.
So, here's how that's, correct, but this is, so I misspoke a bit. Here's the issue. The ASA, what I'm saying is, body worn camera unit does not have to review every single one. If there becomes a clog, the ASA will review it, and the ASA will, will say, "Body worn camera unit, this portion is related to a juvenile without clothing, please redact it." So, the review doesn't fall entirely on this unit and 18 people. It comes back, it's refined to moments in the video for this unit to redact, not the ASA. The ASA is actually finding what needs to be redact. And the way the system works is the ASA can actually tag those sections, so that this unit knows what to redact.
I understand that part.
Right.
Okay. But the ASA herself or himself cannot make the redaction?
Correct.
Okay, that's...
I'm saying, they're going to target the redaction for the unit.
They do not have the ability to make...
Currently, they do not, no.
Okay, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Very good. I believe that concludes any questions to the state's attorney's office. Madam State's Attorney, we thank you so much for your time and for your service to the citizens of Baltimore. This concludes your hearing before the Budget and Appropriations Committee, please, oh, wait, 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 I have one last question. I'm sorry, it was here in my notes, and I was going to miss it. Camera footage, is that footage made available to defense attorneys? And if so, when, in the process, and what cost might that be to your office?
Mr. O'Brien will come back up and give you a complete answer on that.
I'm not an attorney, so I have to ask these things in layman's terms.
So, well, that's a great question, and fortunately, there was significant planning in the transfer of this footage from the state's attorney's office to the public defender or private counsel. Within the TASER system, or actually Axion system, once the redaction or any modification of that video footage is made, it is then transferred by secure transfer within TASER system. So, the cost, we're trying, what we're doing now is trying to build in a system where we don't have to make duplicate CDD, CVD, or DVDs, or CDs. So, there is an electronic transfer system built inside of Axion that allows the ASA to enter in an email address and transfer that directly to the private defense attorney or OPD. So, there should be minimal costs, but I think the cost that will come in the future will be the Office of the Public Defender ramping up their infrastructure and PCs.
And that brings me to a question, you triggered that point, and the council president will appreciate this, of technology. And Mr. Klein, this is to you, to Moet, and the coordination of Moet, that we're able to get more for our dollars than what we are. And I know Moet is coming next week, and so, I want to understand, because I know there's an increase in some, which I, what I consider in the state's attorney's office for technology, and what are we doing, because Moet has not been adequately funded to meet the needs of technology today? And so, that is a question, so we'll all kind of stay tuned. So, you might want to pass that on to Moet to be able to address how they're able to do what they're due, because I know even here in City Hall the other day, I couldn't even connect to Baltimore City's access here in the chambers. Thank you, Madam State's Attorney. We will next have Family League.
How long a break?
Thank you, I will, you'll be hearing from me, thank you for this.
To you.
Redaction is less than five percent.
How long is it?
Oh, okay.
What is it, Chris?
I mean, yeah, the more redacted, the more that you redact, the more potential problems.
Oh, I know.
And that's, you know, I mean, you really want to try to give, you know, a total open file discovery, that, you know, it's...
Oh, yes.
Well, Howard, wait, Howard County has done it for years, I mean, I was a public defender there in the 80s, in the 80s. They had open file back then. Montgomery County now, you get your discovery, you know, you have a code.
Just wanted to make sure.
So, when you enter your parents, you will get the state's attorney, you judge, you know, they send you a letter telling you this, I mean, an email.
Okay.
Saying your discovery is available, and you just go in and put your code number in, and your discovery comes right to you, you know? So, that's the sort of thing that we want to be doing with this, you know? Yeah, I'll set up a time to come over, okay? Great, thanks.
Jonathan, we see you once a year or more.
I'm sorry?
We see you once a year or more.
Yes.
Apologies for the delay, but trust you me, your delay is nowhere near as the delay of others. Why don't you introduce who you have brought with you today, and then go into your presentation, and then we will entertain questions from the council.
Sure. Good afternoon, thank you for having me here. I'm Jonathan Rondo, and the president and CEO of the Family League of Baltimore. I have a small team here with me today, that, but I'll be doing most, I'll be doing the whole presentation. I believe it was handed out in advance of that, and so, I'll just walk through it. The projected budget being presented to you for FY17 will be at the base funding for FY16, which was the funding for FY15 as well, which will serve 20, about 27,000 students in 42 community schools, and 49 after-school programs that will touch about 6,000 kids. In this last year, I wanted to know, in addition to city dollars, Community School Network has included three self-funded community schools. Family League has been working with city schools and others to expand the revenue and resources available, so utilizing school improvement grants, Title I dollars, and so those include three additional schools, including Utah-Moshburn Elementary, Gilmore Elementary, and Renaissance Academy, are all self-funding within the strategy. In addition, with resources from the mayor's office, Family League is partnering with city schools, that has six additional schools in the 21st Century Buildings Plan, doing a community schools planning process, and that includes Cherry Hill Elementary, Middle, Forest Park High School, Fort Worthington, Graceland O'Donnell, Halliburton, and Lynnhurst. In addition to the 42 after, 42 community schools and 49 out-of-school time programs that are funded with city dollars, Family League and our partners leverage additional dollars, and that includes 4.6 million, in addition to the 6.2 of matching funds raised by implementation partners. That's either from school matches or grants that our community-based organizations get. 3.1 million dollars in public and private funds that Family League specifically raises, the biggest chunk of that coming from the governor's office for children. 5.2 million dollars in after-school meals facilitated through Family League, and 2.5 million in volunteer hours. That's about 100, over 100,000 hours that our community school coordinators participate in. As of yesterday, the Baltimore Education Resource Consortium released a study that looked at community schools, and found that students, middle school students participating in out-of-school time programs were 10.8, only had a chronic absence rate of 10.8% compared to students who do not participate in out-of-school time, of having a chronic absence rate of So, just wanted to highlight that, that was one of the key indicators on the slide, is around that. In addition, parent satisfaction at community schools is rated higher than non-community schools. In the PowerPoint that was passed out, there were specific areas, and this is based on city schools annual survey that they give. And so, under the question, "My child's school connects me with resources in the community", which is core to community schools, in Baltimore's community schools, families rate that at 85.2%, where in non-community schools at 78.7%. "Teachers care about me" is at 92.9% in community schools, 91% in non-community schools, and "School staff work closely with parents to meet students' needs", again, critical to community schools, is at 85.7% in Baltimore's community schools, opposed to 81.7 in non-community One of the questions that I was asked to prepare for is, what would not occur this upcoming year if the, without the additional 3.1%? And there's some details around that, including a pie chart that shows how it was administered. Overall, it included six new community schools and six out-of-school time programs connected to them, as well as 52 out-of-school time programs serving K through high school students, as well as 42 small grants for community activities, and 30 new professional development opportunities. Four out-of-school time programs, 27 new organizations new to Family League, who hadn't received governmental dollars, received funding, and 25 of them had operating budgets under a middle, a million dollars. The reduction would mean that community-based partners would have to eliminate 64 full-time jobs and 145 part-time jobs. Out-of-school time programs were in communities such as Highland Town, Morale Park, Oliver, Penn North, Sandtown Winchester, and Southern Park Heights. Those were particular focus areas. And those, that concludes my general remarks. I welcome questions.
Okay, Jonathan. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Rondo, thank you for the service that you and all your folks, and all the great work that you guys do across the city. I know last year, when you guys were here, I specifically asked about us looking at outcomes for the programs that we have, and specifically, in light of what happened last year, I want to know if you guys have started to look at the outcomes of our programs, but also, how they are affecting the health, health outcomes, educational outcomes, job force outcomes, all those outcomes for the neighborhoods that we're, which they're in? So, for example, if we're funding a program that's in Sandtown Winchester, what impact was that program having on that neighborhood? And where would that program, that neighborhood be if that program were not there?
So, we are beginning, based on feedback, we're beginning to look at that with Burke as our research partner, because the year hasn't ended yet, and it's difficult for us to go back in data. We hope to have something in the fall to be able to report that. The Burke Report, which I will make sure I can send out after this, that was just released on Thursday, talks about outcomes at the school level, but we are particularly interested as well in looking at the population level, and how it's connecting with other investments that are happening in the city, whether that's through the Health Department, Recs and Parks, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to know, have any of the organizations asked for grants to deal with the trauma services? Because you know, a lot of our kids are facing a lot of trauma with gun violence and incarceration. Do we fund those, do your organization, fund any organization that takes up that?
So, yeah, there was a particular focus with the additional dollars this year, on focusing on neighborhoods with high levels of trauma. And so, that was where the majority of the additional, of the 3.1 of the 4.2 that came to Family League went. In addition, when you look at the, when you look at the professional development offerings that we offer to, not just the out-of-school time and community school programs that we offer, but any program in the city is eligible to, they've been focused on restorative justice, trauma-informed care, and then they can implement those back in their programs. Community school coordinators also, through a grant through the Department of Social Services, can refer families and kids to family stability programs if they have specific needs around that, as well as work that the University of Maryland is doing, particularly in Promise Heights on the west side. So, there's a number of different areas that we're, we're making sure those resources are available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, your, your, your presentation, very nice about stuff that you are going to be doing, and it also speaks about stuff that you have done. Can you talk a little bit about what you're not going to be able to do because the additional funding that was provided last year was not continued in this year's budget?
So that's the second half of that PowerPoint that talks about the additional three-point-one, what, how it was divvied up, and that will not continue.
The slides thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, where six-hundred-and-seventy-one students had access to out-of-school-time opportunities, that's not going to happen.
Correct.
And twenty-seven small community organizations that were new grant recipients last year will be discontinued.
Correct. So generally, the numbers are, there would be two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-five after-school seats that would be eliminated, six community schools would no longer receive funding, and forty-five or, forty-two organizations who received small grants, those would not continue. So in, when you specifically look at the out-of-school-time programs, which was about twenty-five-hundred kids, those were at twenty-seven organizations, twenty-five of them, again, small grassroots organizations, that would not be continuing.
Mr. Vice Chair, can I, can I, can I redirect one of these to the Finance Department?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm looking at the section in the budget, this is on page eighty-three of the agency detail, under Educational Grants, Merrill, may, royalty-related. It says, under Fiscal 2017 highlights, the family, a one-time transfer of four-point-two million dollars for Family League grants and associated black charities is not sustained in the recommended budget. These dollars are instead appropriated to the Baltimore City Public Schools to help address a reduction of state formula aid. So that explains why there is not a drop in the figure for budgeted FY 2016 to recommended 2017. There's not a drop of four-point-two million because the money is still in this budget line, it's just being redirected to the school system instead of to the Family League.
Yeah, it was a, it was a transfer, so it, it was not part of the base appropriation in the ordinance of estimates.
I'm going to take this opportunity to, to do the Tuesday, Wednesday, the seventy-two-hour reminder, still looking for something that last year said that this was just going to be a one-time thing.
We have that as a follow-up.
But the other thing I'm curious about, and I don't know if this is a Family League or a Finance question, so this is why it's convenient you're both here. On page eighty-five, under Major Budget Items for Service 446 Educational Grants, the recommended budget discontinues funding for earmarked grants to Teach for America, the University of Maryland Cooperative Extension, and Experience Corps. These grants have not become competitive as intended, and the funding is needed to support the Baltimore City Public Schools. Now, my, now, this is what I have been told, and this is what I'm looking for feedback from you guys on, is that part of the difficulty in the Family League making these grants competitive as intended is that because of the timing of our budget year compared to the timing of their grant-making cycle, they can't guarantee, they can't put out a competitive ask for people who are going to apply for these grants until after we commit to giving them the money. And if there's not, so how do we cope with that moving forward, rather than simply saying, we're not going to give you the money because you didn't make them competitive? How do we say, well, we're going to give you the money, and you're going to know we're going to give you the money so you can do a competitive process for them?
I would, I would just say that Family League does put out competitive RFPs based on the budget the mayor presents to council. What Family League cannot do is put out competitive grants or anything, other RFPs in things that are happening in negotiation between council and the administration. That's where the challenge is, and for the last four years, Family League's budget has not been finalized until the third week in June through negotiations between the administration and the council, and so it's very difficult. That's where it's difficult.
So, so if the money for Teach for America, University of Maryland Cooperative Extension, Experience Corps, if that had just been in the actual budget presented to council, you could have dealt with it in your normal competitive fashion.
Correct.
But because we had to have a fight here in the council to get that money restored to the budget, you didn't find out about that money with certainty until it was too late to match your timing?
I would just say that last year, we didn't find out about the additional three-point-one until May, and we still had it administered by September, so after-school programs and community schools were able to occur. So Family League has the ability, infrastructure to do that. What I can't do, which I think is what Teach for America, Experience Corps wants, I can't issue an RFP in, when the budget's released by the mayor in, at the end of March, which is what they want, so they know for sure by Ju, July one that they'll receive those funding. If it's not in the budget, I, it's not a good use of resources, and it's not fair to those agencies to have them go through a competitive process if I don't know with some level of certainty that the administration recommended it, or that it's going to actually be in the final budget.
Okay, so, Mr. Klein, based on that information, would the Finance Department's recommendation be to still just not give this money to Family League because you would rather give it to the school system? Or would you be open to the idea of putting it in the budget? Let's, let's assume right now that we weren't talking about FY seventeen because, as we've already discussed, it's too late for them to do a competitive process, but would you be willing at this point now to commit to next year, putting it in the budget initially so that they can actually do the competitive process that the Finance Department would like to see done?
So there were, as you could see from the language, there were, you know, two things going on. One was, we needed to, we needed to fund the schools at a higher level. We also, of course, had the, the short, budget shortfall, and so we were looking for, you know, what would be appropriate reductions. This was an area that we'd been concerned about, that, you know, the plan had been for them to be competitive, compete in normal grant competitions around the goals that the city's trying to accomplish, not competitions that are rigged for them, but actually, you know, competitions toward whether it's, you know, after-school programming, job training, et cetera, not tailored specifically for them necessarily. So I think you asked about looking forward to future fiscal years. We are certainly open to that. We have an outcome budgeting process. We ask for proposals for, you know, what can we do to advance the outcomes we're trying to achieve, and if that would include a new grant program administered by the Family League, you know, we're, we're very open to, to looking at that.
So, Mr. Rondo, have you made that clear to the Finance Department in the past, that if they put it in their budget that's released in April, you can actually do a competitive process?
We have ongoing communications with BBMR around our ability and capacity to do that. I think regardless of when it's put in the budget, we can release an RFP, so I want to make sure that that, that's clear. I think on this, it's, these three have been a sticky situation since I've arrived at Family League. For me, if you remember, four years ago, I sat in front of you at my first budget hearing where I put out a competitive RFP, and it was, didn't go over so well. And then it was, it's been directed each year through negotiations with council and the administration for the money to come through Family League, but it to be directed towards Teach for America, Experience Corps, and University of Maryland. I want to also be clear that Family League receives zero dollars to actually administer those, to those organizations. And so we continue to, we continue to do that, and we're open to that. We had guidance this December not to submit outcome-based budgeting for these three do that, and so that we follow the guidance that we receive to do that.
So, just to sum up, adding together all of the small grants for community activities, and the number of seats in out-of-school-time activities, and the twenty-seven small community organizations that are grant recipients, do you have an approximate number of total children that will lose their after-school activities as a result of these cuts?
Between, between the money that goes to summer, and that's about three thousand students.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. Slide sixteen says, oh, I see, that's, that's all community activities.
The, the back, slides are just more specific information. The earlier slides that are more in the chart area are the more accurate ones.
About three thousand, three thousand.
About three thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Jonathan. Different from my colleague, I understand the unique nature of University of Maryland Cooperative Extension and Experience Corps, that they really do not fit the RFP model that the Family League uses. Yes, I know, and for whatever reason, this year, the administration just decided to get out of that funding for those two organizations that are really vital to what they provide to young people in Baltimore City. But that's another discussion. I want to talk about, and, Mr. Klein, you may need to clarify this for me. The four-point-two million that the council negotiated last year, that in my mind, because we gave five million to the Family League the year before, my understanding of the four-point-two, that was not a part of the four million, that it was not a part of the funding to go to Family League. When I look at the Family League, their five million that was flatlined from the prior year was broken out of three-point-some million, and then another one-point million that went to associated black charities. Tell me the four-point-two million, where that ended up?
The, the four-point-two million was three-point-one million to Family League, and the remainder to associated black charities.
Okay, all right, so it was four-point-two, well, okay, so that's the four-point-two.
Right, and their base funding was, is about six-point-two for Family League.
So, when I look at.
So the four-point-two was, or the three-point-one that went to Family League was in addition to that base level of funding.
Of one-point-two.
Uh, no, of six-point-two.
Six-point-two.
Right.
So, we, in essence, doubled their funding.
It was, well, again, this was one time, but it represented about fifty percent of their, of their base funding, you know, fifty percent increase.
So I, I'm just trying to understand where we're going. So, so, because if I look at the Family League's chart, and I'm going to the chart, I don't know which numbers, it's a pie chart, that shows the Family League received three-point-one-five million.
That's specific just to the additional.
Just to the four-point-two.
Two, yep. So that's to show you how we broke out that three-point-one.
Okay.
So you knew where that money went.
Right.
Um, but that's not the pie chart of our overall operating.
Okay, so you did not include a pie chart of your overall.
I did not.
Okay, because I was.
Over, overall, when you look at, for this current fiscal year, when you include the three-point-one, the six-point-two, and the additional dollars that we get, community schools, out-of-school-time, and summer is about a thirteen-million-dollar program for Family League, of which nine million came from the city.
Okay, that's where I wanted to get to. Nine million came from the city.
Yes.
That's where I wanted to go. And, and so, and this year, their base is starting at five, at?
Six.
Six-point-two, yeah. So we're funding the, the base level from sixteen into seventeen.
Wait a minute. Your base last year was, I know, see, I want to see all this together because I want to understand the cutout of the four-point-two for this year that is not included anywhere. So fiscal year fifteen, you were at, what was, what, hold on, let me get all my little papers together. I had to take a little break. Right, the baseline should have been nine-point-three-five for fiscal year sixteen, correct?
No, because the three-point-one was a one-time transfer.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't.
The three-point-one, it was the four-point-two. You know, it was a total of four-point-two.
Yeah, we're talking about Family League's portion of that four-point-two.
Okay, but it all went to the Family League, and the Family League then had to dole it out? Or just the three-point-one-five went to the Family League? So with the six-point-two, and then the three-point-one-five, their baseline should have been nine-point-three-five, correct?
Yep, yep.
Their base funding for sixteen, I'm looking at page eighty-six, it was about six-point-one million.
Page eighty-six.
Yeah, in volume two.
Yeah, that's where I am.
Yep.
I'm looking at.
So if you look at Family League.
And Family League Competitive Grant.
Budgeted FY sixteen, six, six-point-oh-eight-three million.
And then the six-fifty-three for Competitive Grant, and that was Experience Corps and Cooperative Extension.
It includes those.
And Teach for America, it included those.
Yeah, and, and some additional funding, even beyond those three.
So it's about six-point-one.
[inaudible]
And so, why doesn't this show the, so then where was the additional three-point-one-five in the FY sixteen?
It wasn't part of the, of the ordinance, it was a, it was a transfer that was made after, after the ordinance was adopted.
It was a transfer that was after, so it won't show up here.
Yeah.
And so what you're saying to them this year is that you're recommending a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, a hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-dollar increase? If I look at the recommended FY seventeen.
Yeah, yes, for the, for what we consider their base funding, yes.
Uh-huh, okay.
The funding should have been at nine-point-three.
Well, they're not going to consider it because in the ordinance that we passed, it was, but technically, it was an additional three-point-one-five for fiscal year sixteen.
Correct.
And what you did with that, without that this year, you're back, you're down to six-point-two.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Um, okay, that's what I needed to understand. And then the breakdown of the six-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, which you just, Mr. Klein, decided to strike totally from their budget, correct?
Yeah.
You know, here's, here's the question I have, and this is administrative question. When we talk about the mayor's vision for the city, that is about, that includes youth and recreation and things of that nature, how do we end up continually cutting funding for youth initiatives?
We're not. We're increasing funding for the schools by ten-point-four million.
A hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand. Where?
The, our, our contribution to the city schools is up ten-point-four million over the state-required effort.
But, wait, wait, that's education, the city schools.
That's, that's, that's funding for youth.
That's the state agency.
Well. If that's, if that's the rationalization that we're using, okay, I got it. I got it. Thank you. Councilman Costello.
Thank you.
The ten million that was mandated by the state legislature.
It was ultimately mandated, but, but, but we had.
The ten million that was mandated by the legislature that we give to the school system is the mayor's increase in youth investment.
We had planned to provide that funding, but it was ultimately mandated, yes.
Well, it was planned with certain conditions that the school system was to accept in order to get it.
Yes.
And when the state decided that you had to have it.
Yes, you are correct.
Then you just decided that was the city's contribution in youth investment.
Yes.
Okay, I'm much clearer now. Councilman Costello.
Ma'am.
Oh.
Madam.
Wait.
I'm, I'm good, my question's been answered, Madam Chair.
Okay, very good. Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jonathan, just one quick question. You know, I've been a broken record on the issue around building capacity of some of the smaller nonprofits that aren't necessarily part of the institutional base of the city of Baltimore, that always have the technical capacity to go after grants like yours. The concern of mine with the reduction of the money this year, I know that there was a huge effort to streamline some of that capacity and earmark it for those organizations. With the reduction that we see this year, how do you feel that you're better prepared to ensure that we're giving the opportunities and the chances of some of these grassroots organizations to actually compete and, and be awarded some of this grant money?
So I think broadly, over the last three years, Family League has done a lot to sort of.
I talk about this every budget hearing.
Yeah, streamline that, and each year, we've, we've done more and more of that, to the fact that we've worked with our auditors. to the fact that we've worked with our auditors to reduce that small organizations don't need to have an audit, that there's other due diligence that we can do to make sure they're financially viable, that doesn't require that. In other, other documents, we also worked with the city's legal department on some requirement, the requirements that the city has regarding insurance that any sub-grantee of Family League has to have. And so we've worked on that. One thing that we have instituted across the board is we provide a technical, every time an RFP is released, we provide technical assistance. We won't write the grant for them, but there's a consultant that they can see on their own to be able to get information.
Yeah, got that. My point is, with a large portion of what was there last year being taken away currently as we speak today, I hope that that's not the case, it's troublesome to me to think that maybe we slip back into where we were pre-three, four years ago, where, again, the same names are getting all the money, and some of the smaller organizations who've built up capacity are not able to compete for that money. How do we ensure, how are we proactively trying to develop a way to ensure that some of these smaller organizations, these grassroots folks, will be able to fairly compete for this money?
So, the things that we put in place will continue. If there's a reduction of 3.1 million, and a big chunk of that went to small organizations, we have to look at that, and we haven't, we are in the process of determining what that, how those cuts would be determined.
Well, just to blankly say, it's my hope that proportionally, we can stay to the level that we've gotten to last year as it relates to the funding that we provide specifically to the grassroots organizations in our communities.
I mean, Family League's position is that we want...
More money.
More, more resources at all possible for youth, even with this additional 3.1. We know that there's still youth that don't have opportunities in our city, but we are also cognizant of the fiscal challenges of that, and I, and so we continue to work with the administration and council to figure this out.
This is near and dear to my heart. I was a Baltimore City Public School student who had the ability to participate in after-school programming, so I understand. But again, I'm going to make a very, very strong statement. I just hope that we're able to keep a proportion associated with these smaller organizations.
And I would agree, and I think we worked really hard this year with the majority of the money going to organizations with really small operating budgets, providing them coaching and wraparound support so that they can receive those resources. Oftentimes, with Family League staff going to their offices, helping them complete documentation, that won't change. But my hope is that those organizations, the infrastructure we built, could continue.
Got you. Now, last question, Madam Chair. This is kind of to you, Mr. Klein, just trying to piggyback on the discussion you were having with Madam Chair. It seems problematic that the administration developed a solution to kind of throw money over the wall for just one year. You know, I know that from my perspective, and I would think to the rest of my colleagues, and the 671 kids in the 27 communities, we're under the impression that this was something that the city of Baltimore was taking serious and not just doing in one year, which happened to be the year of the unrest and everything when we had the hoopla. So, so again, it seems problematic. What was the methodology of the administration and the Finance Department last year to say, "Oh, this year, we'll throw over $3 million over the wall, knowing that next year, we're not going to have the same opportunity, and we have these small organizations that are building up capacity. We have these children who've had amazing experiences just for one year, and then we basically pull the rug from under them." What's the methodology behind that? Why does that make sense?
Well, this was a solution that was negotiated with the council. It was after the budget had been adopted. This wasn't part of our original budget plan. That money, that $4.2 million was money that we had intended for the schools in this fiscal year. But because of circumstances, it was not needed for that purpose. And this goes back to the negotiations that we're still having with the schools about their responsibility for retiree health benefits for people they've hired since the separation. So, we put it back in the budget for '17.
Yeah, Mr. Klein, whether it's this money, whether we're talking about DPW, whether we're talking about any city agency, it just seems to be a flawed approach to build capacity up only for a year and then literally take it away. So I, that's why I'm having a hard time understanding. And I don't think that the children, I don't think that the parents, I don't think that the school administrators. I know that my colleagues weren't under the impression that the ideology of the administration was going to come back a year later and just basically remove the same funding after capacity has been built up. It just doesn't make sense. I mean, that works in no type of quality, you know, organization, or, I mean, it, it, it doesn't function well efficiently, not for Mr. Rondo, for, for the school system, for, for this council. So I have a really hard time believing that that was articulated in a way that's being talked about, you know, this year.
Understood.
Yeah, so, and, and, and is there any other examples like this through city government? I mean, it, I'm going to, I'll just flat-out say, it makes no sense, right? It does not make sense to build capacity and take it away 12 months later.
Like I said, this wasn't part of our originally proposed budget.
Yeah, but when we decided to leverage the money, that was part of the plan, correct?
I mean, I agree, we, we do not, we shy away from paying for services that are expected to be recurring with one-time money, but this was a special circumstance.
Jonathan, can you tell me, what is your total budget of...
Of Family League?
Of Family League?
Our total operating budget for this year is about $29 million.
Okay.
Of that, about $7 million of it is our reimbursement for the $3.2 million snacks and suppers we provide during, throughout the school year. About $4 million of it goes to Be More for Healthy Babies. About $14 million, again, to community schools, out-of-school time and summer. And then about 10% of our operating budget, about $3 million, goes to technical assistance, professional development, and support to the grantees that we provide, and 10% is administration and fundraising. We have about 40 different funding sources at the local, state, and federal level.
Okay, could you send us that as well?
Sure.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Be happy to do that.
Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just want to start by making a statement, just agreeing with my colleague from the 7th District. And for Mr. Klein, we know that this has been a hot-button item for me during, during this budget, but if we can, you know, raise the parking tax to continue to operate a free bus, I feel like we can find the money for, for this $4.2 million for after-school. But also, Mr. Rondo, just some, some quick points or questions for you for follow-up. The 27 new groups that we funded last year, is it eight, could you provide those to the chair so that she can provide it to the council? You know, just what, who they are, what they do, where they are. But also, I know that you and I have talked about this before. I'm still interested in seeing groups that you fund, that you stopped funding, and why? But, because I would like to be able to go back and look at, you know, why you guys chose not to, to defund them, but also what impact that could have on a certain community, and how long they were funded by us before you stopped funding them.
Correct, and so up until this, up until January, we were administering all of our grants manually, and we now have a grants management system, so we will be able to provide that data moving forward. It'd be difficult for us to go retrospectively, but moving forward, based on both our own feedback, but as feedback we've heard from you as well, we'll be doing that.
Thank you.
Well, Jonathan, thank you very much. We'll wait to get the, the answers to the questions we had that we don't have today. Thank you for the service that your agency provides to our youth. And this, the budget hearings are called to recess. We will reconvene on Monday, June 13, and Tuesday, June 14, with taxpayer night being Tuesday, June 14, at 5:30 PM approximately. Thank you all, and have a good weekend.
Thank you.